Our friends from Cox have shown up, so we can start now, and I apologize again for the delay. So, first item for business is the report. No, it's a pledge of allegiance. You should know this after eight years.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and liberty of speech.
So, the board took no action in closed session, although no one got the memo that it's Bahamas and Bermuda night to night. You had to have the shorts on to fit in with the crowd. I apologize if we didn't get that out to everybody. We go to approval agenda.
So, moves?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And let the record reflect that Barbara Lucky was here for closed session, but then had to leave. She's going on a trip, so she left at 6:30. We now have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 9th.
So, move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Barbara is absent. Minutes of the September 14th policy workshop.
So, moves?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, myself, and Barbara is absent. All right. So, we're up to the report of the superintendent. I'm going to -- Sandy, did you have?
I have a question on the end of the card.
Okay.
If you could give it to us.
Please come up to the podium.
Just a quick question. At the last board meeting, we talked briefly about, there was a question regarding the ASPECT testing and when that would be discussed, and I thought it was said it would be on the next board meeting agenda, and I didn't see it on this agenda. Maybe it's buried somewhere. I don't know.
So, at the end, it's item O1.
Oh, one. Thank you.
We have a presentation.
I didn't see it when I looked forward.
Okay. We'll now go to report of the superintendent. Amy.
Okay, thank you. First of all, welcome to all of our guests tonight. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces this year. A year later is really pretty nice on my part to be able to recognize people and know some of the things that you do for our district. I'd like to start by congratulating Monta Malaga for their recognition as a National Blue Ribbon School. So, anyone from Monta Malaga here tonight, congratulations. National Blue Ribbon is quite an honor. It's a rigorous process. The school earned it. We have a district of exceptional schools, and for this particular one, I'm sure that they would be the first to say that their work is a lot like the other schools as well, but in this particular case, congratulations to Monta Malaga. We have more good news coming soon. We had a validation visit for a pretty prestigious award. We'll talk more about that later. I don't want to jinx it, although I'm pretty confident we have some really good news coming from another of our schools here shortly. Just a real quick report, because I know we have things to get to tonight. I was able to meet with our PVE Police Chief Jeff Kepley. Chief Kepley and I are pretty routine communication, and we talked about some shortcomings that we have in our district when it comes to responses from police, from law, from fire departments, staging areas, and we've -- nobody wants to plan for the worst. No one wants to think about it, but we need to plan for it. And the reality is, we are a district that has schools that are tough to get to. Some of our schools have one way in, one way out, limited parking lots, congested streets. So, Chief Kepley has volunteered himself and his staff to come and meet with our staff, with our -- we have a PTA leg that deals with this particular safety branch and emergency branch with Lydia and her team, and I've invited Chief Kepley to speak to the board in a meeting in October. So, we're not sure yet if it'll be the 14th or the 28th, but Chief Kepley will be doing that, and we really appreciate his efforts with us. At this point, I'd like to go through, we have three items. They are agendized items under my report.
All right, so I'm going to interrupt you for item H1. The process we're going to go through is we'll have the speaker's speech, and then we'll have the presentation. So, if anyone has a -- wants to make a comment on item H1 that hasn't turned in a card, please do so now. If not, Joan Davidson, please.
About 12 days ago, I emailed Mr. Boz a question about Transparency California, a very specific question, and my response from Mr. Boz was he would be addressing it tonight. But the Public Record Act of the State of California says you need to reply to me in writing, so I'm still waiting, and I'll be looking forward to your response to me in writing regarding the questions I asked specifically why certain people and administrators are missing from Transparent California. Thank you.
Okay. Don, you want to?
Tonight's report, I need to give it a little context before I jump in. I have personally contacted both associations to let them know that tonight's financial report has nothing to do with our negotiations process. In fact, we have negotiations under an H2 item for people to speak to, and we'll give a very, very brief update on that. But it speaks to a bigger issue that we have in our district, and it was a year ago, just about a year ago to the day, and I was new. I'd been here about a month, and I sat here, and there were some ads that were in newspapers that were paid advertisements, and statements made from the podium, and I remember sitting here, listening to the audience gasp at some of the information that was presented. And if it was true, I would have gassed too, but it wasn't. Unfortunately, since it was also not agendized, we had no ability to respond. And so, does it have anything to do with our daily work? Yes. When misinformation or disinformation gets out to the community and is not checked, it's reckless, and it does do damage. I would venture to guess that it did damage with some of our teachers and classified staff who were here that night, although the next day, we settled negotiations in one day. But it also does personal damage to some of the people who are attacked, and I have to say unfairly, and I'm not one of them. Okay? I'm superintendent. Say or do whatever you want with me. But it's not okay to attack unfairly and, I think, disingenuously, other employees, and it really hurts us when we get to negotiations and things, because people have thoughts that are in their head that are just flat out not true. So, tonight, I'm going to walk you through a few. Wait till it comes up on the screen. All right. There's a difference between misinformation and disinformation, and I'm a visual learner, so let's just look at it real quick. Misinformation, and we're probably all guilty of this at some point in time. I have certainly been guilty of this. I say something I believe to be true. I've heard it from somewhere. It was true at one time. It is no longer true, whatever the case may be, but it's accidental and unknowing. And appropriate actions on the back end of that are to acknowledge it, to correct it. I'm not going to read the list. We're all teachers, you know, you're not supposed to read a PowerPoint. Okay? But the bottom line is, if you're guilty of misinformation, and it's an accident, and it's this definition, accidental or unknowing, I think you have a responsibility to clear it up, to state that you made a mistake, to regroup. Disinformation is completely different. Disinformation is purposeful. It's deliberate. It's knowingly false. So, where have we seen some of that? In just my first 13 months here, I've seen it in some paid advertisements. We're going to look at some of those in just a minute. Emails to community groups, organizers, volunteer groups, public statements where statements are made, and then the person, people, group leave before there is a response, when a response is allowed. Social media. Yeah, I sent out a commentary that I wrote that was published in the PV News today. I sent it out to every parent, to every employee in our district, because I think it's that important, and it deals largely with the use of social media and how that has robbed people of the opportunity to reflect, think about things, research, get some context. It's so fast now that kids and adults alike feel the need to share the first idea that pops in their head. That's not the way it used to be. It used to be if you wanted to write a letter, you had to do some work. So, the speed and efficiency has hurt us as a group. Sad was taken out pretty recently, and I'm not going to go through everything. There are some elementary math errors, but then there are some real misrepresentations, and it has done damage. It's done damage to our volunteer group who worked so hard to manage the parcel tax money. It does damage to community members who felt so strongly about voting in a measure, a self-imposed perpetual tax, to support the district, support teachers, support students. But I have to correct a couple of things. We're only going to hit a couple of these. Number one, it starts by saying, "Where has your PvP USD parcel tax money gone?" Well, just as a point of clarification, it didn't even go into effect until July 1st of 2012. So, all of the previous examples could not possibly have anything to do with the parcel tax measure that we're talking about in here, because it didn't exist. But to a casual reader, you start to read this list and say, "Oh, my gosh. What is this district doing? What are these volunteers doing? What about this oversight committee?" Let's go to the next piece. There's a statement in there about the growth of the Technology Department at the district office, Malaga Cove campus. Well, if these people are here, I haven't found them yet, because what the money was really spent for were site tech aides that are on your campuses. They're the people you called that are running around. There's usually one of them. They're extremely busy. It's a completely appropriate expense for the parcel tax. In fact, without these people, we may as well not have technology. There'll be no one there to fix it when it doesn't work. So, two examples of things that they're just, at best, confusing. Going to the next piece, you can't say "shh" to your own phone. Okay. Next, a PV News article, and this one, this is exactly the example that I wanted to talk about. Last year, when it was reported at the podium and in back-to-back paid ads, the second ad going in after the facts were in the hands of the creator of the ad, that our Director of Curriculum Instruction was making $285,000, and I listened to the group basically groan, and I thought, I'd grown too, but for a different reason, because I knew it wasn't true. So, you might say, "Okay, fine, that's not true." Well, what is true? Well, this is what's true. So, the director, in questions, total compensation, which includes benefits, and you all know that your benefit package depends a little bit on which package you select and your number of family members, is $142,000. Now, somebody in this room right now is thinking, "Well, that's still too much." Fair enough. Once you know the number, you can have any opinion you want. We can all have opinions. We just can't have our own facts. So, when we flip to the next one, just a quick salary comparison to give it a little bit of a context. A teacher's salary is based on 185 workdays. The director is 220 workdays. So, really, you're not comparing apples and apples in this right from the beginning. There's a difference just in paid days. The teachers that we use on the bottom, I'm going to give you all the information, so I'm not guilty of disinformation myself, has a sixth-period assignment, which means that they have no preparation period that has been purchased back, and that is something that a pretty fair number of our teachers do. It is not ideal. It is extra work. It is appreciated and sometimes helps us in a whole bunch of different ways. But regardless, when you look at the daily rate, that's pretty close. So, when you look at a snapshot, and the intent is to create confusion, to stir controversy, it's pretty easy to do with any of these reports. In fact, let's go through a couple of things. First of all, all of our pay schedules and salary schedules are not only on the website, they have been for five years. Anyone can go here and pull up all of our pay schedules. There was a question about Transparent California. Fair enough. There are some numbers on there, and if you're not familiar with this, I would encourage everyone in this room to go put your own name in and see if it's accurate. Some of you, it will be. Some of you, it will not be. The same information is reported to all of these agencies. Transparent California is one of several that posts salaries, and interesting enough, when I go and check the same information provided to each of these different groups, you will see different numbers posted. Once the data leaves our hands, they're free to do whatever they want with it, not unlike some of the arguments I've heard in this room about other things. Once the data leaves, you lose control. So, I found this guy, and this is pretty funny. I want you to look at this, because this is on Transparent California. This is years, I think, 13 and 14, and for those of you who I have not met, this is me, and this is before I came here. I was an Assistant Superintendent in the Huntington Beach Union High School District. So, if you look at this, your eye is going to go to some places, and you may make conclusions, and I can tell you now that your conclusions will be inaccurate. Conclusion number one is, according to this report, in my second year, I made $21,414 less than the previous year. Well, I can assure you that my wife and I would probably not have been happy about that, and in fact, it didn't happen. Every district reports information differently, and in this particular case, it is not reported that this was a calendar year, not a school year. So, year two was a partial year, as I was able to come here to this district. Your eye may also go to other pay section. Now, I saw some either miss or disinformation out about an employee that they had called out specifically, and they did not, in the scenario, combine the regular pay with other pay for total pay. They just used base and base, and as you can see, even in my example, the pay varies very, it's pretty different if you have or don't have that. So, you look at other pay, and everyone says, "Oh, gosh, that's an administrator. That must be some kind of crazy bonus." Well, in 2013, the $4,780-something there was a retro check, and that district post-retro pay, like we all received last year, in the column "other pay." So, you look at the last year, and like, wow, he must have left in a scandal and got one of those buyouts with that $30-something thousand. Well, no, those are my unused vacation days, which meant in that particular scenario, I worked days in addition to my regular work year. Those have become a property right, your vacation days, just like your sick days, and in that district in my contract, I was able to cash those out at the end. Very common. But if you just look at this, you don't know those things. How could you possibly know those things? Which is okay. That's why we would expect to maybe have some questions, not go straight to newspaper ads with disinformation. About Transparent California, interesting, the internet works for everybody. It works for us, too, and we did a little research on Transparent California, and we found a couple of things. First of all, Transparent California is not run by anybody in California. In fact, it's not even run by a public agency. It's run by the Nevada Policy Research Institute, and we could stop right there and say if this was a piece of software that we were presenting, people would already be poking holes in it. But we're going to go a little further and say, "Okay, what else did we find?" Well, they're partners with the California Policy Center, and I saw a whole bunch of cell phones in here earlier. When you're done, Google this. It's great. Okay? Who's the California Policy Center? Well, they are partners with a group called Union Watch. So, when people think that Transparent California is there to expose the discrepancy in teacher and administrator or classified or state employee salaries, it is not. It is a Union Watch group. Okay? So, I think it's important to know who you're getting your information from if you're going to make these kind of comparisons. And that was just a screenshot off of their site. Conclusions, last pieces. Where does this get us? This keeps us, this disinformation, misinformation allows people to throw a grenade in a room and run out the door. It's distracting. It keeps us from doing the real work. We're going to talk tonight about the real work that we're doing in some areas. This is not the real work. While I have no intention of chasing every rumor, I also have no intention of allowing disinformation to rip this district apart. If we're going to debate things, we're going to debate the facts and the truth, and we're going to have real, honest conversations. Then we can have disagreements or agreements. This person makes too much, too little. That's great. We deserve more, less, whatever. I don't think anyone's going to say less. We deserve this or that? Fine. Let's talk about the math, and let's do it. But we're not going to allow these games to continue, to go unchecked any further. That's all I have on this item. We can open up for discussion.
Do you have any discussion on this? Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any commentary for H2? It's the last chance to get a card in. All right, we're going to go in the order of the, when the cards are received. Becky Gallagher.
I'm tall. Is that good enough right there? My name is Becky Gallagher, and I'm currently in my 29th year teaching. Started here in 1987. Happy to do so. Thrilled being here. Currently, I'm an intervention elementary teacher at Point Vicente. I'm in my colleagues' classrooms every day, and I'm very impressed with their dedication to provide the best education possible for the students of our wonderful Palos Verdes community. Our teachers are teaching a new reading program, a new math program, have increased technology expectations, will implement a new report card, apply knowledge and teaching of Common Core state standards, and use modern teaching strategies. We are world-class teachers, meeting these expectations. Parents appreciate us and support us. We supported our district financially years ago while accepting the sacrifice to our own home financial situations. We are struggling financially, but continue to rise to the occasion professionally. I don't understand how the world-class teachers I see teaching every day are being compensated at the bottom third of our neighboring districts. You have an opportunity to show this community and teachers that you respect and appreciate all we do by compensating us accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize if I...
Be who you are and say what you feel, because those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind. Yes, that's Dr. Seuss, because yes, I'm a first-grade teacher. My name is Jasmine or Josby, and I hope you don't mind what I have to say, because all of you, this district matters to me. Seven years ago, fresh out of grad school, I began teaching in this district, and then, as the saying goes, "Last one hired, first one fired." "Don't worry," they said, "this happens. You'll be fine. You'll have a job next year." Well, next year came, and I didn't have a job, so I spent a year subbing, and honestly, like I tell my students, everything happens for a reason, and personally, a lot of wonderful things did happen that year, one of which was a long-term sub job at Silver Spur Elementary. But as a long-term sub, I had to fight to become a proper classroom teacher that year, and for the next five years, I fought each time for my job, only to receive a letter at the end of each year thanking me for my service. I still have every one of those letters. But I never gave up on my district, on my school, or on my students. When the going got tough, I didn't get going. I succumbed to moving schools, grade levels, classrooms, all to remain a teacher in this world-class district. For the first time in seven years, actually ever in my teaching career, to be exact, I feel able to say what I feel, because I'm now a permanent teacher, and that is a letter that's framed on my desk. I don't have any cold, hard facts, no numbers, no statistics to share with you. That's not what I came for. As cliched as it sounds, I didn't get into teaching for the income. I'm in it for the outcome. For the world-class outcome that we as teachers here don't take full credit for, but like to think we're a part of, what I'm sharing with you is from the heart, from my heart. This is sad. I'm sad. I feel sad that we have to resort to this, to arguing, complaining, fighting, pleading our case. I personally am tired of fighting. Don't we as teachers deserve to be treated as world-class? At the end of the day, I'm up here most importantly, because I teach my students, even at a young age, to always stand up for what they believe in, so I must do the same. I believe in us as teachers. Our world-class students believe in us. Our world-class parents and community believe in us. We know we're good enough and worth every penny, and when you believe in yourself, no one can steal that love from you. Hope is wishing something would happen. Faith is believing something that will happen, something will happen, but courage is making something happen, and we need to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tony Oruburu. I have taught in this district for, this is my 20th year in this district. This is the first time I've felt compared to come to a board meeting, because of the way I feel about the way, as teachers, as you can see tonight, we feel we're being treated by the district. We have first-class students that achieve things that are ranked nationally. We have schools that are ranked nationally, as we spoke tonight, and there's an article in the paper the other day about that. But yet, we as teachers, the very people who are responsible, are largely responsible for this, for educating those students to those great things, for bringing the heights of these schools to great things, we're at the top in everything, but our teachers are treated as mediocre. We're in the middle of salary. We're in the middle of benefits. We're in the middle of all of those things, and we all believe that it's time that, if we're going to be a world-class district like our community and like our school district rightfully accept or respects, we feel that as teachers, we should be treated as world-class as well. We've created a world-class district, and we want to be treated as such ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Cece Layback, and I am a third-grade teacher at Soliato. I have been in the PvP USD for 15 years as a third, fourth, and fifth-grade teacher. During this time, we have weathered many storms together. Most recently, we weathered the storm of the budget cuts that led to furlough days and increased class sizes. As teachers, we took the brunt of the hit of the storm. Most teachers lost nearly $6,000 during that furlough era, while the district saved roughly $3.7 million. We lost even more money, if you account for the lost salary, when our pay scale was frozen for over five years, not allowing cost-of-living adjustment, which is typically 2% a year. In addition to the financial hit, our workload increased as our class sizes went from 20 to 1 to as many as 30 to 1. I know that happened in my third-grade class for several years. During that time, we elementary teachers became the PE teachers. We became the librarians. We took on additional school responsibilities, volunteered our time for PTA fundraisers. We went without supplies that were We went without supplies that were cut along with funding, often personally subsidizing the difference. We did it all for less pay for our students in the hopes that one day, the clouds would part, and we would get our day in the sun. More money on the table. As elementary teachers, we don't often like to boast about all the things we did for you, but we will if we have to. We know the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but in elementary school, we teach kids to wait their turn, do their best, treat each other with respect, and if you work hard, good things will happen to you. We're asking that you, as a district, do the same. We have patiently waited our turn. We did our very best with less, and did everything you asked us to do, and we did it well. Every teacher in this district sacrificed personally. We did it for our students, but also in good faith, hoping that one day, our hard work would be somehow recognized. It seems that this day is here. We ask that you honor the teachers of the Palos Verdes School District, not just in speeches and public praises, but in our paychecks where we need it the most. Palos Verdes schools rank at the top of the South Bay, the state, and the nation, yet our teacher salaries rank in the bottom third of neighboring 10 districts. We are not mediocre teachers, yet we do get very mediocre pay. Teachers don't get into the profession for the big payday, but we do deserve a fair and competitive salary to keep up with the cost of living, especially in the year when the district has money to spend. We're not yelling. We're not screaming. We're not making demands, but we are asking for the district to honor our diligence and our hard work, and bring to the table an offer that shows teachers that you value us, taking a hit, and riding out the storm with you. We ask that you bring a respectable, competitive offer to our bargaining team that validates the enormous sacrifices our teachers have made over the years for our students and for this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Davidson.
After serving on the board for eight years, and having taught at South High for 15 years, I feel that I can say that I've seen both sides of the issue. And I always cited a teacher, since I'm also a credential teacher, I had to say that. I hope there's a journalism teacher in the room, because if they do, they should fact-check the superintendent's presentation, because everything that was said in those ads is correct and taken line by line out of the district's budget. Having said that, I wanted to read to you my letter that showed up in today's LA Times in the opinion page. Steve Lopez wrote a great article about a teacher who passed away named Alan Kaplan, and how everyone came back to his funeral at Hamilton High, and this was just last week. "Thank you for bringing the subject of a special teacher's influence onto children's learning onto your pages. Teachers like myself get bashed every day, blamed for students' lack of knowledge or inability to pass an exit exam. Billions tossed at Common Core tests, and computer learning isn't the answer. For-profit charter schools aren't the answer. But you put one dedicated teacher into a classroom, and results in learning will soar. These guys deserve a raise."
Thank you. Brendan Carg.
Good evening, community. My name is Brendan Carg, and I'm an art educator at Peninsula High. I'd like to talk about the next generation of educators in this community by placing my own experience in context. My wife and I, both professionals, live in Torrance in a modest home that we were able to purchase because we both finished undergraduate and graduate school with no debt and had family resources. Working, however, is not a choice for us. It's a necessity. Why is this important? A local life allows me to work a bit later, later even than the contract stipulates. I can catch a bit of water polo or a softball game. Seeing that the school play is in, so are evening and weekend events. I oftentimes catch a bite in the village with colleagues and mill over new ideas. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous when I speak up here.
Good job, Frank.
Or do my thing usually. Being present is infinitely important to the kids we teach. The value of attending a student's extracurriculars makes all the difference. So on to the next generation. My recent student teacher was excellent. And when we talked about where to look for jobs, my best advice was, "Not here." Why? She has student debt, has no family means, and her boyfriend doesn't make six figures. I grew up in PV with teachers who lived in the community. A few of my peers still can. I live in the Riviera. But those young teachers won't be able to buy in my neighborhood, so maybe north of 405 in Long Beach, the South Bay is basically out. Student teaching should be one of our best recruitment channels, but how can any of us suggest to a good, young teacher that our district is a smart place to make a career? We are geographically isolated, surrounded by astonishing wealth, and part of a culture that sees real estate as a natural resource. We all understand that the LCFF shorts us. But the point is this. The board and district leadership can either move forward developing stratagems to keep employee costs as low as possible, or harness the creativity of all the human capital we've so recently invested in, and develop a strategy to get teacher compensation as high as possible. Having a community of teachers who live close enough to be present is essential to the vibrancy of school programs. An environment where everyone tries or needs to advance into administration so that they can afford to live a middle-class life is not a culturally or professionally sustainable model. Those of us in mid-career or late-career become the mentors and counselors of those in early-career. Recruiting and retaining good teachers depends on the advice of the teachers you see in front of you. We need compensation that allows us to feel like a local life is possible for ourselves, and that a district, and a district that shows it's meaningfully dedicated to making that continue before we could ever advise a young person that this is a good place to work. If you want to have a district that aspires to be world-class, you need a faculty that is able to live a professional, middle-class life, a life that's local and optimistic. Thanks.
Thank you. Cindy Mitchell.
Love this place. Alrighty. My name is Cynthia Mitchell. I am the department chair for mathematics at PV High. I'm, I was distracted by the fact sort of moment, and I do have to, because of a little show, being a math person. You know, when they were saying the parcel tax, everyone who lives in Palos Verdes is always paying a parcel tax. So they may have been paying a sunset parcel tax before the 2012, so it bothered me that it wasn't a parcel tax that was being spent that way. I think everyone who lives in Palos Verdes is always paying one or the other. So God bless you for paying your parcel tax. We love it. We need it. Anyway, with that said, I loved all the other facts. My deal is, I know we're going to hear about deficit spending. The district was really amazing last year, spending some money, and I was really happy to do it, receive it. But I do believe it wasn't that much of a deficit. We have 10% reserves. And we still have 10% reserves. Being the math wizard I am, I go 10% plus 0 equals 10%. That's where I'm at. So I'm believing that we are still at square one, so I think we have a little bit of money to spend. I also would like to just share that the timing is really poor to nickel-and-dime the teachers this year. I know the elementary school teachers, I know somebody alluded to, that they are prepping everything new. And they want to do it with integrity, and they want to do it right. That's because that's who we are. We're all about being the best. So I want to do that kind of thing, that generous sacrifice. And I want to talk to my department and say, "Hey, I need you to pilot this book. If it doesn't work out, we need to do another one." I need you to go to a conference, which I can't stand going to conferences, but I need you to, so you can talk to, "Hey, Maricosa, did you try this book? Did you try this book? Hey, what did you do, Malibu?" I need to see them in my face, so I'm going to go. But I'm not going to go. If I get anything, I'm going to put a little bar, 5%. And I'm picking 5% because of our leader here. I know it was your step or whatever created your 5% raise, but go ahead and take a 4% step, whatever that would create, and then I'll take a 4%. Like, I want you to lead me. If you're good with 4, because we have deficit spending, I'll be good with 4. But if you're good with 5, I want 5. And I want all my peoples to get 5. And that's, I know it's a step, and it's a thing, and I know you're going to say, "Hey, there's a benefit here." Well, that only, all those little other things do not affect every single teacher here. Your 5% affects you totally. So, and it could be with your other benefits and whatever, and you guys got great health benefits, but it's awesome. And I'm, and I want you to be paid that much. I do. I want all of you to be paid that much, because we have an amazing district. But I don't want to be, again, on the side where we're sacrificing. So I'm just asking you to better timing if I'm going to ask my people to work long hours and pilot books. If it's under that, it's not going to be generous sacrifice anymore. We're going to be tired. We're going to be done. We're going to be tired of that rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Derek Larkins.
Hi, I'm Derek Larkins. Been here long enough. Well, I remember this building when I was in middle school, Malaga Cove, great place to grow up. And I'm actually not going to read my own words tonight. I'm reading a letter from one of my friends, a friend of a lot of us in here, and that's, I'm getting emotional, because this is Jim Whalen, our avid teacher, a guy I coached baseball with, and a guy that teachers love, the kids love, the guy who made me smile and energized me, and truly loved his school. So these are his words. "My name is Jim Whalen. I spent the past 11 years teaching in the PVPUSD School District and had hoped to teach here for my entire career. Several of my colleagues asked me to come tonight, but since I do not work here any longer, I decided not to attend. Early on in my 11 years, it became clear that contract negotiations was bloodsport for this district and its school board members. I saw very few raises and contracts were dragged out every year deep into the fall, creating unnecessary anxiety, frustration, and anger for district employees. Teachers are an easy group to negotiate with. Teachers don't expect to earn a lot of money and would be quite content with a steady yearly cost of living adjustment, and maybe an occasional real raise over and above the COLA. Certainly, the district can afford this, and I am also certain that the citizens of this community would want its employees to be able to earn a wage that keeps up with inflation and general cost increases. However, for reasons I could never understand, this board continually refuses to pay its employees fairly. And again, teachers do not expect Wall Street or even Main Street money. Token COLA increases yearly would suffice, and the slow drip method would be more than fair for everyone involved, namely, teachers and taxpayers alike. After years of 0% raises, not to mention poor treatment of employees by the district, I took my services 12 miles north this year." He's at El Segundo. "In fact, I will earn tens of thousands more there over the next 5 to 10 years, but better yet, I will be treated with respect. For example, this year, my new district and its teachers jointly negotiated. As a result, a raise in additional money toward health benefits was agreed upon. Better yet, this was agreed upon easily and quickly because, again, teachers are not greedy and only want to be treated respectfully and be paid a wage that allows them to pay their mortgage, feed their families, and maybe even allow them to save for retirement, so they can actually retire a few years before they reach their grave. While I miss teachers who I forged friendships with at Palos Verdes High School, and I miss PVHS students and their families, who always treated me with the same respect and professionalism I showed them, I do not miss this board that does not respect its employees. How else can you explain these dragged-out contract negotiations year after year that often did not result in nothing for the hard-working employees of this world-class district? I would encourage the board members to realize that an incremental cost of living adjustments to pay in health benefits and occasional raise for its employees is good business for the entire community. This is truly a situation where everyone can win each year." It's only two more sentences. "Slow but steady increases satisfy employees, allow employees to budget, keep teachers motivated, and prevents good teachers from seeking employment elsewhere. If this board would poll the community, they would see that the taxpayers would agree with this common sense approach to wages and benefits. Respectfully, Jim Whalen, PVPUSD Teacher of the Year for the 2013-14 school year." Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Valeri.
I'm not a teacher. I'm a parent, and I'm here to speak for our teachers. I'm here to speak as a parent who has put my children into a classroom, trusted my own child with one of these people every day, three children, for the last 13 years. And there's no other place I want my children to be than with one of these wonderful, magnificent teachers. A couple, it was about a month ago, I sat in this room and listened as you went through how you were going to go about giving your top administrators a raise. And there was a page like this, I actually took a moment to print it out before I came here. It was a schedule that shows how every year, they get a raise. And it's part of, it's just a schedule. And it says they get a raise. Basically, I don't want to trivialize it, but if they don't mess up so badly that they get fired, they get the next step, which is approximately 4% to 5%. There's none of this, "Oh, let's wait and see what the state gives us. Let's wait and see what Jerry Brown's final thing is, and then we'll have to go into negotiations. We might get 3% if we're really lucky." There's none of that. There's a schedule, and you know what you're going to get, and you give it to them. And when I said, "Why on top of $270,000 do we also have to pay somebody an additional $800 a month for gas? Can't they afford gas out of a salary that's almost $300,000 a year?" And I was told, "Oh, no, no. You have to pay to get the right kind of people. You have to pay and be willing to support and to properly take care of the people that you want to have." Well, these are the people I want to have. Okay? These are them. And it is time that we start treating them the same way we treat the other people, the other administrators. It is time we start giving them. I don't know if any of you have read your newspapers recently, but there is currently a national shortage of teachers. And there is also a statewide shortage of teachers. There is no doubt that these well-qualified individuals could walk and find another job somewhere else, especially the math and the science teachers. And I don't care how much you pay any of our good administrators and how good they are. I would challenge any of them to walk in and take care of Linda Kurtz's class or Mr. Stardub's class, because I don't think they could do it. So, give these people what they deserve.
Thank you. So that's all the speakers we have on the topic. But before the superintendent reports on negotiation, I do want to correct one thing, one piece of information that got slightly skewed with Sandy's report. The discussion she's talking about on the salary schedule is talking about step raises. Step, you have step and column raises. That's not what we're talking about, when we're talking about, every teacher has step and column raises, also built in the contract. What we're talking about is negotiating the cost of living and other raises that then is added to the step and column. And as a practice, for the eight years I've been on the board, no administrator has gotten, any, no sitting administrator has gotten a raise any different than any of our other employees, because we've always had the philosophy that if the teachers didn't get anything, the administrators didn't get anything. If the teachers and the classified staff got 3%, the administrators got 3%. And we followed that policy all along. People change jobs. We have followed that policy for eight years I've been on the board. All right, anyway.
Before I turn this over to Dr. Bose, I would like to sincerely thank our speakers for their thoughts tonight. I think that, I just want to thank you. It was very respectful and powerful. I have no intention of splitting hairs on some things. Just one thing, and you, the carry, don't care about this, but there was a statement made that the benefit packages were different for different groups. The benefit package is identical for every employee in the district. So it's not a huge deal, but I just want to make sure that that's clear, that there is no different benefit package. Everything else, great. And again, just a sincere thank you for the way everyone handled this. And before I turn it over to Dr. Bose for a very quick piece, I also want to thank... it over to Dr. Bose for a very quick piece, I also want to thank each of you who, for whatever reason, needed to bring your kids with you tonight. Either you didn't have someone at home, or you just chose to bring them to show, show what this looks like. But I met some really cute kids today. So thanks for all the kids hanging in there. I know some of them were three, five years old. If you're still here, then you're better than my kids were. So, thank you. Thank you for attending. I want to turn this over to Dr. Bose for a very quick conclusion.
Sure. Thank you. And we are in successor negotiations with both of our units, with the Palos Verdes Faculty Association and with the California School Employees Association. And I believe we've met four times with each of the bargaining units, and putting more dates on the calendar. And I think we're making good progress in our meetings with both units on both salary and benefits and language proposals that both teams have introduced. Both PBFA and CSCA have veteran negotiating teams that do a good job representing their membership, and we feel that the district team is also doing a good job at the table. And this is, in addition to the negotiating sessions, all three teams participated in a budget data workshop with Ron Bennett from School Services. And I think all three teams would agree that that was educational for all the parties. We look forward to our next meeting dates and reaching successful agreements with each unit. Thank you.
Does this board have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna-
I can make a comment.
For you, Kim?
I will. I've known so many of you for so long. This is, this is my quarter-century mark being involved with the district, having a card-carrying 30-year-old that started at Miracat in 1990, that you do the math. And I've, I've known many of you in many capacities, whether I was site council when I was at Miracat and Mira West, or when I, my involvement with the Education Foundation. And it's, you know, seeing all the red shirts and everything does give a little angst up here, you know, that there's more of you than there are of us. And, you know, we like to keep everything civil, but I, all, all the honors and accolades and everything that come to this district, I say, we have, we have an awesome quartet of dedicated staff and faculty. We have the motivated kids. We've got the involved parents. And then through the obvious dependence that we have on both the seven and a half or so million that we get from the permanent parcel tax, and then about the three and a half million that we depend on more than ever from our foundation. And then you throw in the PTAs and the boosters. It's the, it's the tenor that we, we establish in the community that is so important. And I truly appreciate the civility that's been demonstrated here tonight. Those who really know me, not just in this role, but know me, know me. I'm not one to blow smoke, and I'm not blowing smoke. I'm just thanking you very much.
Thank you. We're going to call a short recess for a couple minutes, and we'll come back and talk about air conditioning. Back on the agenda, we have student board members who have homework. Senioritis homework, but homework nonetheless, with your probably seven AP classes or whatever you've got going. Okay, so we're going to go back to the superintendent report and talk a little bit about air conditioning. I do have cards, so we will go through the cards. Sorry. Oh, boy, I left them get out of order. Sophia Mackiewicz. Mackiewicz? Oh, you're not looking at me like that worked out too well.
I'm Sophia Mackiewicz. I'm a parent at Point Vicente, and I just here tonight just to bring to light, you know, the feasibility study. I would love, you know, I'm glad that a lot of things seem to be happening currently, but I just wanted to share that there are many parents at Point Vicente who really, you know, don't want this issue to go away
of all, I'd like to thank you for the Cool Water Fountains. They're a big hit, and the
as attempts go down and then resurface again. So I really do hope that with everything
line is super long on hot days because the kids love it.
And don't take away from your time.
gets, you know, discovered, and these rates that came out, they seem highly inflated,
Yeah, don't take away from my time.
Did the vandalized one get fixed?
Yeah, did it?
that there are real solutions that happen and not just saying, it's not a priority
You're gonna lie.
Not yet, no. But we're looking forward to it. We only have, I think, one currently
because it is a priority for the parents, and every summer it resurfaces. So I hope
working. This is not part of my time right now. No, no, it's not currently working. We, the problem that we're having with just one is we have a student body of over 900 kids.
this year could be the year that we're not resurfacing it again next year. Thank you.
So as you know, the line is super long, and sometimes some kids will just say, the line's
Thank you. Jill Perry?
Hi, I'm Jill Perry. I've been a parent in the district for 13 years, been a volunteer
too long, I'm going to be late for class, and they don't get to have a chance to use the Cool Water Fountains. And, but they're a big hit, and my daughter actually texted me a picture of it one day, and there was like 20 kids in line waiting. And the kids,
and a room mom. And I want to thank you for doing the feasibility study for the air conditioning
what happens is just, and this is not for my time, just so you know. But what happens
for, for the three schools. And I want to thank you for trying the interim solutions
is the water bottles get super hot. So our parents, we will put ice water in the morning, but by the afternoon, they're in their lockers, it gets super hot. So what we see is kids
of the portable AC units. I don't know if they're working that great, but I think it's
dumping out the hot water and putting in the cool water for what they drink. So it's
a great idea. It's, it's worth exploring, definitely. And let's, I just wanted to say,
like a two-part person. So we really do really enjoy the Cool Water, and we really appreciate
like Sophia did, let's keep up the momentum. I know the weather's going to cool, but I
that. And we really cannot thank you enough for the feasibility study, too. I read it,
hope your interest and investment in this won't cool. And at Point Vicente, we would
and it was really eye-opening. And we want to say that last year, last year and even
eagerly look at a variety of alternatives. We're just eager to talk about it and explore
this year, we think that the district, the school board and the district has moved so far in helping us and being supportive of this issue that we have. But we still have
the options and cool down the classrooms. Thanks.
far to go because our kids are still sitting in classrooms that are over 90 degrees. This
Thank you. Dr. Jeanne Hahn?
month alone, September, we've had several, several days, few weeks, the temperatures were bad. And as is reported before, we have an increase in nosebleeds and heat exhaustion that reported, not just by parents, but also by teachers. And we also feel very badly for the teachers who have to sit there five to six hours a day to teach in weather that is so hot and miserable. They can't teach as well, and our kids can't learn as well. So what we're asking for the school board and for the district is to go the next step, to make sure that we provide safe and healthy environments for our kids to work in and to learn, and for teachers to work in and students to learn. Ridgecrest is really asking that this year alone, that we would like the electrical panel to be upgraded so we, that it can be able to have portable air conditions running. And also, not only that, the electrical panels really need to be upgraded to hold the technology that we need in our classrooms. I don't want the teachers have to decide, are we going to run the AC, or are we going to run our computers? Can we run both? We need to be able to have every classroom be up to speed to provide the amount of electricity that is needed for kids to learn in a cool, safe environment, but also to be able to have access to the technology that we need to learn. And that's what we're asking for. Because we're not asking for the stars, moon, and sun, because that would be AC, and we, essential air, and we'd love to have that. But we're asking for a feasible stopgap measure where we can cool the classrooms, not to a nice 72 or this temperature, which is wonderful, but just to the 80s. And can I just say one thing about the NPR?
You can.
We're very grateful that you are conditioning the NPR, but the NPR can only house five classes. So that means there's five to six classes out there who didn't get the Lotto, didn't win the Lotto and get the NPR that day. So that, that means there's six classes out there of kids who never get to the NPR. My daughter has never been in the NPR. She has not won the Lotto at all. So because of that, it's wonderful, but someday there's going to be a kid out there who needed the NPR, and they're not going to get it. And that kid's going to go to the hospital and amble from heat exhaustion. So, thank you. But thank you for everything you've done. I really appreciate it.
And I would just comment that we appreciate the fact you get the big picture. If it was as simple as just plugging an air conditioner, we'd do it in a second. But unfortunately, there's a lot of challenges, particularly at that site. Sandy Valeri?
Well, I looked at the feasibility study, and I was extremely disappointed to see once again that you had forgotten that you have any schools at all that exist on the east side of the hill. You neglected to even consider, consider feasibilities and thoughts of what it might cost to put some air conditioning into some of the places that we have been requesting for years at Mira West Intermediate School. We don't have a Cold Water Fountain.
I'm going to have to stop you. We Air Conditioned Mira West, I'll actually be addressing this, with the bond money, Measure R. That project was done in 2008, but go ahead.
You've air-conditioned some of the classrooms, it's true, but not all the classrooms, not the NPR, or the TAB, as we call it, and certainly not our, our library, which you have been asking for. Our rooms out there, you guys don't know, down here, it gets so hot up there, it gets to be 100 degrees regularly. Every day for the past two weeks, three weeks, I've gone to pick up my child, it is over 90 degrees every day. And when I go to pick her up, she's had lunch, no place to go to get cool for lunch. They have no cool NPR to go sit in lunch, so they're sitting in lunch in the hot sun. Then she has PE fifth period, guess where you're having PE, but in the hot sun. And then her sixth-period classroom is not air-conditioned. So she comes home with a migraine every single day. Heat exhausted and a migraine every day. We don't even have a Cold Water Fountain. We don't even have that. Now, I'm not expecting that if you put it and you rack and stack these things, that we would come out with a number-one project need. I'm not expecting that. It sounds to me like you've got other places that are more important. But we'd at least like to get on the table, to be looked at, to be thought about, not to be cut summarily dismissed. When it came to Miracat Alina, I want to make it clear, it was a parent who put in that air conditioning, not the district. A parent came forward and voluntarily put in the air conditioning for the entire Miracat Alina school, did that back when Mersky was the principal. And when you needed air conditioning for our little four and five-year-olds who were in DKNK over at the little Mira West campus, and we came and we begged, and we begged, and we begged, and you said, oh, no, we're too busy spending the bond money on this building. So to tell you what, what you need to do is ask the parents to donate fans, open the doors and windows, and pass out water. And we're like, that's just not working. It's over 90 degrees in those classrooms, and our kids are going home sick with heat exhaustion. So the PTA dug into their pockets until we put the air conditioning in. So we've had to fund our own air conditioning on that side of the hill also. So that's just to set the record straight on a couple items.
Thank you.
Oh, and one, one last point, very quickly. I know air conditioning is important, and we've got to do air conditioning because it's not going to get any colder in the next couple seasons coming up. But urgent, urgent, couple inches of rain we got, we had leaks. And I bet every other school in this district had leaks, too.
So thank you for bringing that up because that was going to be my point, is that unfortunately, we have a huge list of things, and roofing is one of the hugest. We've done a bunch of studies on that, and the, the replacement cost is more than our entire budget by, for deferred maintenance by four, three or four times. One of the things we have to do as a district, and we started to do it, and then we kind of slowed down, we need to re-go back to it now that we finished up all our building projects, is we have to come up with a long-term schedule for the bigger maintenance projects and come up with a funding stream to do it. Because we can't, you know, we can do a feasibility study of, of air conditioning, and we're making a value judgment that the, if we do that and go forward, where those three campuses have higher need than other campuses. But it doesn't, it doesn't put anything in context about what the overall needs of every, all the maintenance is in the district. And so I'm looking forward to moving, you know, moving forward with a planned maintenance budget that addresses all the long-term maintenance needs. Air conditioning, I mean, speaker made a comment about not forgetting what happened on the first day of school. I remember my first day of school at Dapple Gray. It was 130 degrees. I'd never been anything like that in my life. I also remember back in 2005, we did a complete feasibility study of what we're going to do with bond money, and air conditioning wasn't even raised in some of these schools that are in these hottest places, the hottest places in the district. And that was through a, a long vetting process as to what projects get what priority with the bond money. We haven't gone back since 2005 and done a facilities master plan, and that needs to happen, too. But we have to make a fundamental decision because we know our facilities needs are much greater than we have the ability to fund. If we're going to do that and spend the money on a facilities master plan, then we also have to say, we're going to be willing to go back to the community yet another time and ask for another bond, because that's the only way you're ever going to pay for it. And if we're not willing to do that, then we shouldn't spend $250,000 to $300,000 on a feasibility study for it because it's just money down the drain. So those are all issues that have to be rested with in the next few months, and I just wanted to give some context to the air conditioning part of it.
Okay. That's a great segue, because I have the historical document, because this was all sounding familiar to me. And it's actually on, on, on the website. The link to the facilities master plan that Larry referred to was from July of 2005. And it wasn't until after Measures RNS passed that that master plan could be adopted. So the adoption of the master plan, RNS was passed in the election of November 2005. The meeting to approve that master plan wasn't held until around March of 2006. But the telling part of that master plan, again, the link is actually on the business office webpage, if you want to look at the whole master plan to give you an idea. It was to, it was to highlight that there were more facilities needs than there were funds available. And as Larry said, the only, the only way you go through these things, you know, you're not going to, most of us can't go out and buy a car just on salary alone. You're going to have to find a way to pay for that, for that note. You may cover the first couple of months, but then, you know, you don't want the repo man coming. So the, the section I want to, I want to read from was category eight of the master plan. Category eight was heating, heating and ventilation systems. And I'm reading the second paragraph in this plan, as soon as I get my cursor up here, that may sound real familiar. So this is July 2005. "Some schools, due to their location with the community, experience times during the academic year when classroom temperatures rise above acceptable levels. At these times, it's not unusual for the temperature in some classrooms to exceed 90 degrees. It is recommended that at school sites where there is no cross-ventilation and where the temperature does interfere with the learning process, that air conditioning be installed and used judiciously during the academic year." And then it goes on to say, and should their decision be made to do air conditioning, we need to budget for the electricity. And then it finally has a list of the sites and what's going to be funded using the bond money of those sites that have said they are the most impacted by that criteria. And it was Silver Spur, Soli Auto, Vista Grande, Dapple Gray, and Mira West Intermediate. There wasn't a lottery. We didn't have a game of horse out, you know. I've heard so many things, how people think that air conditioning got picked here and not there. It was all a vetting process. It was, as Larry described, some of these sites that, that say they need air conditioning now, the site leaders back in 2004, 2005, wasn't on their priority list. And that's, that's, those are the facts, folks. So that doesn't solve where we are now, but I want to make sure you have the historical facts straight. And again, this document is on the website for the district.
It hasn't gotten any cooler at the sites that didn't get air conditioning, unfortunately. So we do have to move forward, but it's important to understand that choices are made, and it wasn't just hit and miss. Oh, I have one more speaker, Ted Shirley.
Hi, I'm Ted Shirley. I'm just representative for Point Vicente Elementary School. My daughter goes to first grade there, so I'm one of the many concerned parents about this issue. And I guess Point Vicente wasn't on the list that you just read, but- And then it finally has a list of the sites and what's going to be funded using the bond money of those sites that have said they are the most impacted by that criteria. And it was Silver Spur, Soli Auto, Vista Grande, Dapple Gray, and Merle Estes Intermediate. There wasn't a lottery. We didn't have a game of horse out, you know. I've heard so many things how people think that air conditioning got picked here and not there. It was all a vetting process. It was, as Larry described, some of these sites that, that say they need air conditioning now, the site leaders back in 2004, 2005, wasn't on their priority list. And that's, that's, those are the facts, folks. So that doesn't solve where we are now, but I want to make sure you have the historical facts straight. And again, this document is on the website for the district.
It hasn't gotten any cooler at the sites that didn't get air conditioning unfortunately, so we do have to move forward. But it's important to understand that choices are made and it wasn't just hit and miss. Oh, I have one more speaker, Ted Shirley.
Hi, I'm Ted Shirley. I'm just a representative for Point Vicente Elementary School. My daughter goes to first grade there, so I'm one of the many concerned parents about this issue. And I guess Point Vicente wasn't on the list that you just read, but, you know, clearly now, at least from, from what I've been told from my daughter and my, and my wife, you know, the conditions there, at least in, in my daughter's classroom, were intolerably hot this year. You know, one day she got a heat rash, I think she was sitting on the blacktop. I think another day she just skipped because it was, it was so hot. So, I mean, as has been, been said here, you know, Septembers have been really hot the past couple of years and they're just not getting any cooler. So please don't ignore this issue even at the sites that aren't directly on your, on your radar and do everything you can to develop a world-class, long-term plan to address this issue and even with all your, your other budget considerations. But, you know, hopefully you, you can, you can piggyback on your last facilities master plan, but please don't forget this and get, get something, something in place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's our speakers.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to provide tonight's report and it's, it's pretty brief, but it is going to outline some action steps. First of all, we had some questions about why are we putting some things in motion now? Was it a response to this, that, or the other thing? And it was a response to our feasibility report. It, it literally landed back in our hands last week, so it was approved in April of last year by our board to hire an architect to come in and do the feasibility report. It has been reported that the numbers included in the report are inflated and they are. They are. We don't know the percentage because until we do the design work, we don't know what the numbers will be. So the architect routinely built in some padding. So, so while some people will look at the report and say, well, I could do the work for less, there are a lot of other things that go into that report. As we, as, you know, it's got out there a little bit and I have had some communications with some solar companies about some options there, including power purchase agreements. But that, that has nothing to do with our electrical panels. If we don't have panels that can operate our devices, it doesn't matter how they're powered up, they can't handle it. But I did hand our feasibility report to the expert from the power, solar power company and his immediate reaction after reading through a, a few of the architect's comments was to laugh. And I thought, okay, I'm thinking this is probably not a good sign. When, when this person laughs, he said, your, your electrical panels are woefully inadequate and, and old. So when we talk about Ridgecrest, let's start there for just a second. Lydia Connoy and I went out and we asked for a meeting and had a meeting with the leadership team at Ridgecrest, which is two, two members of each department and the principal. They have a representative group. We sat down, even that day, we had just delivered portable units to try as a pilot. We, we delivered four units. Two individual classrooms received one unit, one classroom received two. The, the leadership group picked where the classrooms were. We didn't have anything to do with that. There was truly a pilot and I think they've even rotated them around a little bit since then. And we were concerned that even with just those four units, we would start tripping breakers. And as of yesterday, we've tripped seven times. So we could say, told you so, that, that doesn't help anything. But we are going back and I met with Louis today for quite a while. The project to power Ridgecrest up to a point to where it could handle forced air would be about $750,000, give or take some amount of money because of trenching involved and other things that are huge. DSA approval architects, not to mention the people that actually do the electrical work. That's, as far as the feasibility report goes, that is not feasible for us right now. What is feasible, and Louis is working on this right now, we, we hope to have numbers back as early as maybe even next week, is to upgrade the panel to a point to where it could handle portable air conditioning units. It is a smaller demand, it's a lesser threshold, and we think that there's a chance we're going to be able to do that. That's good news for a couple of reasons. And somebody had mentioned earlier that forget about air conditioning portable units. Let's say it's a beautiful day, it's 65 degrees out, we can't run science hot plates beyond about eight or 10 in a room without tripping a breaker. We're having trouble powering up Chromebook carts. So the panel needs work with or without this. So we just think that makes sense and we're going to bring back some recommendations that make sense, they're fiscally responsible, but can also help us look at these other alternatives. In the, in the case of Point Vicente, I just have to say Beth Hadley is, she's here actually still, is, is as good of an advocate for her school as anybody I've ever worked with. And, and Beth is, this is a compliment, Beth, relentless. Beth, and just a, just a side note, on these hot days, I don't sit here, even though our offices aren't air-conditioned either, I don't have 30 kids sitting with me, so that's not the same condition. I go out with my tie and, and, and go meet with kids and go in the classrooms and I'm just going to tell you, some of our classrooms are horrible on these handful of extremely hot days. So no one is trying to defend or rationalize that. I would agree with Mr. Shirley 100%. I am meeting with any parents who are interested October 7th at 6:30. Lydia's coming with me, I believe Louis is coming out there too. We're going to talk about the reality of what is, we'll look at the feasibility report. We're probably not going to spend a lot of time on that because we can't fix it to the level of the feasibility report. It's just, it's not, it's not going to happen right now. But we can talk about portable units, we can talk about different options, we can talk about electrical panels, and we can have action steps. We really want to take some action here.
Don?
Yes?
Is that October 7th at Point Vicente?
It's at Point Vicente at 6:30. I believe Beth has already sent out an invitation. We'll send out several more. And, and that, we asked the parents if they had concerns to attend that meeting because then we can have a real back and forth and a dialogue and problem solving. Who knows who's going to be in that room that might have a great idea. But we have every intention of continuing to make progress in, in this area. That's, that's really all we have for now. I don't want a technical report from, from Louis right now. I think we understand the feasibility report. The feasibility report, the day we got it, was posted on our website, sent out to everybody. It's technical and a big staggering number at the end, but we are not defending some classroom conditions. We're, we are definitely taking action steps in this area.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can you explain a little more about the solar, how that would work? Is that something that's realistic to help us here with either of these schools or?
Couple of things. I don't want to get ahead of the information I want to work with the board on. We will have a solar presentation on October 28th and that will be to discuss options including power purchase agreements, what that might look like. I've had some very, very low-level, just scratching the surface conversations with our city managers, just to sort of talk about what would that look like, what could happen there. But I don't want to get everyone excited about that yet. It, it is something we're exploring. It is a concept and an idea.
But I want to be excited about it.
You can be excited about it, Linda. I'd be excited for you. There is some potential there that could give us cost savings, but it, it does not directly impact this work. This work funding would come from somewhere different.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Report of student board members. Mr. McFarland, what, what are you, what are you going to, you've listened to all sorts of stuff?
It's a lot different from everything before this, but... So already since I've last been here, a lot has been happening. It always seems like in the beginning of the year, a lot happens and it kind of dies and I picks up at the end. But our senior class had our senior sunrise, which everyone got to school before zero period, and we had donuts and hot chocolate and we watched the sunrise. It sounded really good until my alarm went off. But I was actually surprised about how many, how many kids showed up that day and it was really fun for our entire class to just hang out before school started. One problem was when we were looking at the sunrise, it was like everywhere except where the sun was, was clear, and then there was a huge cloud right over the sun. So that was kind of a bummer, but it was really fun. We had our back-to-do barbecue for our freshmen and transfer students, where we had a little inflatables and bounce houses and stuff, or not bounce houses, the bounce house obstacle courses and...
Bounce houses.
And, bounce houses are fun. And they were...
A bunch of 18-year-olds, perfect.
And they were able to just hang out and meet each other and then go over to the football game. We had our first major class competition, which our major ones are actually in the gym. So ASV is really nice and they come the night before and they section off the bleachers for us and they kind of decorate it with our class colors. And then we all go into the gym and it's usually one of like, they have like some obstacle course or something to do. This time it was kind of this game where you had to like run around a trash can and then if you touched the trash can, you were out. And it was a lot of fun because in the, in the gym, you can actually get like into it and you can kind of like start chants and stuff and that's always fun. We had our Capital Comes to Campus, which I know you spoke at. It was really cool. It's, it was the PTA's effort to foster civic engagement in schools, which is something I really care about. And I think that I'm really happy that the PTA is supporting it because so many students when they graduate just don't really care about politics and being civilly engaged. I thought it was really interesting. We got to hear about the federal level, the state level, and then the community level. I thought especially the community level because in school, that's something you don't really get. And kind of the state level as well. School tends to focus on the federal level. So that was really interesting to hear about and all different members of the community. We had back-to-school night and a lot of our leadership groups, they helped lost parents find their way. I know my dad got lost a few times because, I mean, my sister gave him wrong room numbers and he walked in, this is not a math class. So they were always helpful to all the parents.
Was that intentional, by the way?
No, I don't know. He just called me.
I'm talking about the wrong room numbers.
Oh, oh, I don't know. Right now for seniors, we're having college visits at the school, which is really a good opportunity to hear about the school and see actually oftentimes the person who's going to be reading your application. I know a lot of students are signing up for that and it's really, it feels like you'd be missing class, but teachers are really good about letting students go and allowing them to just make up their work the next day or take the test the period before, the period after. And it's really helpful for us seniors before we go and apply because it, it is kind of a nervous time right now, kind of wondering where we're going to go in the future and what we're going to be doing next. This has been a really fun start to the year for me. I know it's senior year and it's supposed to be the most fun, but I heard from my older brothers, it was very busy as well. It is busy, but I'm going to say it has been more fun than I expected. And right now our school's kind of looking forward to homecoming. We all know ASB has the theme and so we're all trying to figure it out, but they don't actually tell us. So hopefully next time I'm here, we will know the theme. And I'm actually not sure about the homecoming date, but we might have had our homecoming. So thank you.
So before we go to Emily, I just want to highlight one thing you said and that's the College and Career Centers. Until you have a student that goes all the way through the process and graduates from high school, you have no idea what that resource is. We have an amazing resource at both high schools and tireless people that run that department on very shoestring budget with, dare I say, slightly underpaid for the amount of work they spend, time they spend running those centers. I mean, they were vitally important to my three kids. And I, I, every parent I've ever talked to that's had a kid that's gone through college and gone to the Career Center has appreciated it. And the more you take advantage of that, the better off you are because it is a fantastic program. I think it's funded by the PEF. So I want to acknowledge that because without that kind of funding, we, we don't have those kinds of programs and that's a really vital one. I'm glad you're taking advantage of it.
Yeah. I didn't realize either until this year. And you can just walk in anytime and get all your questions answered. It's really helpful.
And the great thing about the College and Career Center at Peninsula is that actually can be an uninterrupted process now that we approved at our last meeting, the two new rooms that are going to be on the Silver Spur side. Because the College Career Center was always the one, oh, this group needs to meet, so off they would go. And, and so it's even going to be a better resource for you guys. Hopefully the library's next, where we can move meetings out of the library.
Emily?
I found it very interesting that one of my first agenda items was the College and Career Center. I just wanted to point out that especially this year, our two ladies that work in there, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Hoffman, have done a truly excellent job outside of the general College and Career Centers that I usually see because they've been using our district, you know, tweeting and sharing with social media to encourage our students to join. I actually had her personally email me saying, I know you're really interested in this school. There's a thing at Loyola, you should drive there. And I found that to be above and beyond what I expected out of a College and Career Center person. So our first, you know, past month of school has been packed with activities that I think really reflect the caliber of our students at PV High. Our homecoming was a complete success. Not only did we win our game against Foothill, but we managed to raise $8,000 for the St. Baldricks Charity Foundation, which combats pediatric cancer. Our Red Tide Regiment, which performs at every single game, was justly awarded first place at the West High Invitational. And I think a lot of our Seekings Spirit Squad really was excited to hear that because our regiment works, I think even more than sometimes our football players, we see them on the field all the time. For those who were interested in government, we did, PV High was very well represented at the Capital Comes to Campus. Again, inspirational messages of civic engagement and the importance of, you know, communal involvement in the government, I found to be, you know, very inspiring. Our Triton Yearbook was awarded the highest honor from the American Scholastic Press, which was first place with special merit and an additional section honor, and that's supervised by Ms. Pavelka. And our Kings are very excited about our Club Rush, which is an opportunity for Seekings to demonstrate their involvement outside of academics by creating extracurricular clubs, community service clubs, and they can even start one of their own if they feel that PV High doesn't adequately maybe support a really big interest of theirs. So after interviews, there's like a Club Rush, kind of similar to fraternities or sororities where you can rush all the clubs that you're interested in. And we're expecting to have over 100 clubs this year, which is really, really impressive. And I would also just like to thank the teachers that are still here and our administration and our board for all of their efforts. We're really appreciated by the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board members, we don't have our SOCal Regional Occupational Center representative. Don, are you aware of anything that's going on with SOCal ROC?
Yes, we, we are meeting, we, we held a meeting just a few weeks ago over at SOCal By the way, just as Emily's walking out, Emily? I just have to point out one thing because I was so impressed. Emily had a, a college interview scheduled for today.
It's still on, apparently.
It is still on at nine o'clock. Emily, get out of here. Emily's interview is with Georgetown and, and, and she chose to come here.
Should have brought the interview here. It could have really helped.
Yeah, well, we have cameras, but Emily chose to come here and fulfill her responsibilities when everyone would have understood, so thank you. And, and Michael was thanked by, I think, every politician in the history of the California at our, at our Capitol Comes to, Capitol Comes to, to the district, everyone wanted to...
Capital Comes to Michael.
Yes. Yes, Michael, Michael was a superstar.
Well, they know the power that the man wields is your, how many, how many members of the State Board of Education?
Number 11.
And you're number 11?
He's number one. What are you talking about?
Well, and, well, we had the, you weren't here when the former superintendent of the schools, Jack O'Connell was here and said, you know, many times when there was something before the state board, the member he would make a beeline to was the student board member since you're in equal vote. So I don't know whether, you know, Mr. Torlicson is on your speed dial, but...
X you regularly?
Well, it's interesting.
Stay bright.
Thank you.
Just to contrast that, our, our counsel to Michael is to speak his mind and represent his peers. And that's all the counsel we're going to give him. He's bright enough to share his own opinions. SOCal ROC met with superintendent and, and CBO group that's represented as a subcommittee. There was a little bit of confusion about how to come up with the 50% of CTE funding formula. Lydia had it figured out already, so we were ahead of the curve and the others will most likely follow our model. I, I don't think that's a big deal, but we are starting to have talks about how to fund SOCal ROC in the future. That's it.
Thank you. No?
Technology Advisory Committee meets on October the 22nd, that is a Wednesday, in this room at 3:30. That is a Wednesday in this room at 3:30 with representatives from all over the district. Are you on board for that one too? Yeah. So Linda and I will be there for that. That's a public meeting and so that's, that's what's happening.
Anthony?
Yeah, I just, from the School Facilities Board Subcommittee, I just want to add that Lydia has been working feverishly to try to find some comparable cost for facilities around some similar and local districts. And she's sent some correspondence to Larry and I that she's working on it. It's become a lot harder than I think we imagined when we first made the request. So I just, that will be coming. We haven't met yet, but that is something in the works. And then I would just want to add, most things have been said about Capital Comes to Campus, but I was very appreciative of the opportunity to speak. Michael was very well represented in terms of letters of, and accolades and recognition from, I think, everybody but the governor's office. There were senators, Ben Allen came, which I thought was great. A lot of the other elected officials sent representatives and it was a very great long day. I want to thank the PTA ledge reps and I want to thank Malcolm and Julie Trell and Kim Rutledge. I mean, these were folks that have done a lot for Capital Convoy and especially the parcel tax and it wouldn't have happened without you guys. And I was reminded that day as we were sitting there, wow, that, that seven and a half million dollars really does make the difference. It allows us to function and it wouldn't have happened without the kind of leadership that both Malcolm and Julie and Kim led, as well as the ledge reps and the community and the students that were involved. I thought it was a great example of civic engagement, so I wanted to do that.
Thank you. Linda?
I'll just say one, one thing about the Capital Comes to Campus. I thought the, the PTA leadership did such a great job of mixing everyone together and it was so fun to see the students. And I talked to students from all three high schools and they were just, they were enjoying the staffers who were subbing for the representatives just as much as the representatives themselves because I think some of them are kind of, it was going through their head, oh, you know, I could do that job. There was a lady from Don Canaby's office that was amazing and I could see some of the kids kind of going, oh yeah, you know, that, I could, I don't, I don't want to run for office because that's not any fun. I'd rather do the staffing job. So that was kind of neat to see. I had a quick visit to Peninsula yesterday as part of their, are we not supposed to talk about this? She tweeted about it.
If you tweet it, it's your game.
It's a validation visit for a special secret award.
That wasn't code, I tweeted that.
But I spent the morning with the leadership classes at Peninsula and the kids were so amazing and their teachers were great. It was really a lot of fun. It's what the district is supposed to be about. The kids can teach all of us about how to lead and how to behave and they, they were unbelievable. And sharing with the secret gentleman that was visiting about his, about, about, he was asking a lot of questions like, why are you taking this class? And are you taking this class because it's, it's a UC approved? And the kid said, no, I'm taking the class because I want to be in this class and I want to help the freshmen. And they were, it was just a really neat, a little psychology and sociology thrown in. It was really neat classes.
It wasn't the Pope, right?
No, no, it was a secret, some official man in a suit. I'm not sure what he was, what he was doing. And then just a quick thing, Joanna, if sometime in the next few months you could update us on how, we adopted all the textbooks for elementary and middle school, how that's gone. Because I've been talking with a lot of parents at elementary and middle school and gotten mixed results, so just some kind of update, how the, what the parents think, what the kids think, what the teachers think, what you think, all together. That's it.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of public condiments on non-agenda items. Kennedy O'Regan.
Hello, everyone. So after tonight, this might seem a little, not as important, but I think it is worth considering. So it has to do with information and College and Career Center and privacy. And the information I'm talking about is our children's information or their private information. The first, and I'd like the board and the administrative administration to take this in the light of, can you come up with a policy that will help protect our children from having their information given to strangers and also allow the parents to know when that information might leave the school district into hands of others that we have no idea who they are? So the first week or two, my son, who's at Penn, was given a survey called the Health Science Career Interest Survey. It's by the Educational Research Center of America and has some questions about college and careers and then a bunch of personal information, personal questions. And in the fine print down here, they say that amongst other things, the data will also be shared with, my eyes are getting bad, ASL Marketing Incorporated, a for-profit company. So I went to ASL Marketing Company and they have the little news, news flash here on some, you know, when they merged with another company. ASL Marketing, their rebranding efforts coincide with organizations' acquisition of assets from Student Marketing Group that further position us as being the leading provider of student marketing data. Our active database of over 175 million high school, college, and young adult consumers and their parents allows us to create custom solutions devised to meet precise client targets and goals. Ironically, when I went to the Educational Research Center of America's website, on there they had a link to some helpful things for students and one of them was about revealing too much, for kids to reveal too much. This is from their website, Revealing Too Much. Unfortunately, people of all ages often reveal too much. Children can be made especially vulnerable by sharing personal information such as home addresses, phone numbers, and private thoughts and feelings and pictures, blah, 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 blah. So the company that is giving the survey that says that it's dangerous for kids to put it online is selling our kids' information to a marketing firm. Listen to some of these questions that are asking. Our children's name, full name, address, gender, phone number, email address, now get this, first name of a brother or sister who lives in your home, their name, their gender, their age, the grade they're getting in school, and what grade they are at school. This was the first week of school and I know you guys have to be concerned with this, okay? How do we protect our kids from this? And you know, when my kids go on, on an overnight trip, I'm given something that I have to sign the authority to let them go with teachers that I trust. You're asking me here, without any parental authorization, to just give my kids' address and phone number, all their personal information and mine, my entire family's information, to strangers who are selling it to who knows who. So I think it's something that we really need to take a hard look at.
Thank you. As you know, we can't respond because it's a non-agenda.
I know, I know. That's all I want you guys to.
Larry, I would like to make a comment that I think is within our parameters. First of all, the information presented right now is dead on accurate. That all happened.
Have you say something real quick? I'm sorry. But careers, college people, blow the doors off these people.
Absolutely. We're in agreement. Two things. One thing is, it's going to bud right up against the line, but I'm not going to cross the line. The information was never sent to anybody. It was corrected. And next I'm going to have Dr. Culverhouse contact you specifically because I can't go further than that, but she will, she will contact you specifically on that. We are in total agreement. Okay.
Sandy Valeri?
I have two things I want to talk about, so if I can squeeze them both in. One had to do with student board members. There was a great article that was in the paper recently about student board members and it made me think about our board members who are phenomenal. I have a great deal of respect. I think they're wonderful kids and can contribute so much. And here we have Michael, who is in fact a voting member, a voting member on the board at the state. But they come here and all we really get from them is a report from what's going on in their schools. And yet, I sat here last time, I think in two hours, we discussed food services. These, these young people who firsthand deal with food services were never asked for their opinion. They never got to weigh in. I'm like, why are we not making better use of them? And this is from just, why are we not making better use of them? Why are we not including them? Of course, now it's late and they have to go home and study, God bless them, but maybe things, there might be agenda items that we could think about moving forward earlier on where they could weigh in and actually contribute in a very usable, you know, useful, important manner and not just sit here and hear a report from them, but actually get them to contribute and add. I'd like to have them weigh in more. That's just my two thoughts. Secondly, there's, I, I, no, I'm on the PTA Council and someone came in, gave us a speech, a presentation about something that's going on called Behavioral Modification Intervention, a pilot program. And everybody was in the room, pretty, these are all the PTA leaders from all the schools across the district and we're like, what is this? And, because it all caught us cold. We had never heard of any such thing. And the way the woman described it, I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful to her, but she was relatively new to the district, so I apologize. I don't have her name recorded. The way she described it is, well, we're going to, it was kind of academic behaviors and we're going to look at how having, how we can intervene early and, and discover academic behaviors that we can modify so our children can be more successful. And why are we doing this? What are we doing this for? How much is it going to cost? And, you know, lots of questions that didn't get a lot of good answers. And then I went online and I happened to see something, which I didn't see there today when I was looking, but it was online earlier last week or something. And there was also something about Behavioral Modification Intervention, but it was a little different definition and it had to do more with what I'd call interpersonal behaviors. Basically, you know, we're going to intervene early and teach children how to be nicer to each other, you know, and all the things we should've learned in preschool about keep your hands to yourself and don't take things that aren't yours and, you know, behaviors like that. And so I'm like, well, now I'm really confused because I got one presentation that talked about academic behaviors. Now I'm reading something on the website about interpersonal behaviors. So exactly what is this interpersonal, you know, what is this Behavioral Modification Intervention pilot that we are running? And then I'm, started me thinking, because I come out of an industry where we have run many pilot programs, and pilots are like scientific experiments. They're supposed to be thoroughly documented. You should have a pilot program that you define, you describe it. What are you piloting? What, how are you going to evaluate it? What are you specifically going to measure? What metrics are you going to use to decide whether or not your, your pilot is successful or not? It's not something where you, well, let's just try something and see if we like it. That's not a pilot, that's just serendipity. So a pilot is metrics. You try it, you bound it and say, well, if we got improvements, how do we know the improvements were related to this and not to something else? Because you have controls, just like you do in a scientific experiment. If you're not doing that, you're not really doing a pilot.
Thank you. Joan, you had testing, but we have a nice topic on testing and I know you, okay, well if it starts to become, I might cut you off.
The results, and this is from leaders that I've been reading, experts around the United States, saying the results are wide, wildly misleading because the only thing that's been released are the percentages of students who meet proficiency levels. They're not test scores.
So we're having a presentation about our testing and the testing results and we're going to talk about all that and we'd love to have your comments in context of that discussion.
But I, I have other things I want to say, so.
Okay, we'll get to the other ones, please.
All right, well, what I was going to say, going to say is that parents, when they get these test scores, are not getting the kids' answers, whether they got 100% or not.
So you're still going to what we're going to talk about.
All right, Larry. I want to explain that these test scores will not relate to the California Academic Performance Index.
Which is also going to be discussed. You know it's going to be discussed.
I don't know it's going to be discussed because I didn't see the.
And we'll get to, we'll get to it relatively quickly because we have a lot of consent things that will go very quickly.
Okay.
And, and you've been tireless advocate about this and would rather have your comments in context of the report because I think they're helpful.
Okay. Then I'll finish up what I'm, I'm going to say. I'm going to say that if PvP remains on the path that it has created, and this is for academics, that you've, you have created the achievement gap that you keep referring to. We never had an achievement gap, but when a school district slams the door in children's faces so they can't take accelerated math or AP classes, or they're sitting in a math class with 42 students, which is happening in Penn High right now, then you've done a terrible injustice to children and the community. Parents are scrambling to get their kids tutored. Teachers are scrambling to try to understand the new Common Core math. That's simply ridiculous. Children's self-esteem is drowning and I want to know if this is really the legacy that you want to leave. On another note, I was able to see Dr. Austin's commentary that is going to be in the PV News tomorrow. No snake, no snowflake in an avalanche ever feels responsible as Voltaire is your headline here. And I would say that this is Common Core. It's doing irrevocable damage to every kid in this district and you sit here and just keep going down that path. And it's doing horrible damage to kids and no one seems to care. And that's really unconscionable.
Thank you. And I, if you're here, I'll pull, call you back for the testing. All right. Special report on playground surfacing.
Slideshow needs to start and.
Can we move to another item?
All right, well, is it going to take a couple minutes to get started because we can go to the consent items? Okay, let's go to the consent items while you're working on that. All right, well, discussion action actually is revisions to the Administrative Regulation Panel presented for our first reading. All you participate in that but me. Do you have anything, does anybody want to add anything?
No, I do think it's important to note for the public tonight that this, the initial read took place in a public board meeting recently, so it's not like we haven't had a long, lengthy discussion about.
Right. I mean, that's the standard.
A very long, lengthy discussion.
That's sort of the standard, the way it works. Okay, so it's presented for a first reading, so will somebody make a motion to move it on to the second reading?
I move approval to move to the second reading.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Should we go to consent calendar? Okay.
Rock and roll.
Okay, so tonight what we're going to do is present to you an analysis that we did on the playground equipment at Vista Grande Elementary School. Our playground surfacing is failing at all of our elementary schools. However, the reason I selected Vista Grande is because when I visited that school, I saw three playgrounds that were in very, very bad shape and so I felt it would be easier to do the analysis with one school with the multiple playgrounds. So this is the kinder yard. This is the, a picture of the equipment on the kinder yard. Although it looks pretty good, there are a lot of pieces that are beginning to rust and have some damage that we're looking at replacing. This is what their surfacing looks like. And unfortunately, I was there the day that the crew was there making repairs. So although you can see a lot of the different trip hazards, a lot were already repaired as well.
Louis, I'm going to interrupt you one second. How do you even repair a crack that wide when you have a material that's obviously shrunk?
Basically uses a caulk product and he just fills it, fills it in. The important thing is when these fail, the wires that they melt the system with are becoming a safety issue, which is our biggest concern right now. Kids are cutting their toes now. So the fix used to be to re, try and reweld them, but what, what they do now is they remove the wire and they seal, they seal them with a compound.
Right, and it obviously doesn't even extend the life of it.
No, no. It's a Band-Aid on a Band-Aid, on a Band-Aid.
On a Band-Aid.
On a Band-Aid.
Thanks.
So then we looked at some costs for the kinder yard. We know that we will have to refurbish some of the equipment, so we're looking at a cost of just over $13,000 on equipment for the kinder yard. And then I'm going to explain these different vendors a little bit later on. Right now I just want to give you costs. So we looked at four different vendors. PlayMata, just over $59,000. KYA Surfacing, $41,000. Landscape Structures, almost $104,000. And Mir. almost $104,000, and Miracle, $44,000.
Those are bids based on some kind of piggyback arrangement or something?
They actually aren't bids. We contacted them individually, but we do have, there is some type of agreement in place, which we'll also address later. This is the primary yard. So with larger structure, more swings. This is a picture of the equipment. This is a picture of the failing surfacing. And then this is our cost page. So to replace the necessary equipment on the primary yard, it's almost $15,000. And then to go with the PlayMata, almost 107. KYA, $69,000. Landscape Structures, almost $74,000. And Miracle, $67,000.
If you go back to that one, Lydia.
You want the picture, Malcolm?
Yes, ma'am. I got the picture. I've got a question, though. Cost to refurbish the equipment, there's just one company. Miracle is the name of a company that does it?
You have to use the existing manufacturer.
They also have the lowest price for cost to resurface. Do we get some kind of a deal because they do the equipment?
They're actually a rep for that type of system. It's not a Miracle system. It's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to.
We've got it all encompassed at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Then Play Yard 3 has the climbing apparatus. It's all climbing apparatus. And on Play Yard 3, I would say that their surfacing is probably in the worst shape, because although this is a picture of the equipment, you can see the pieces there that are failing. And here is more pictures. Not only has it separated, but it's flipping up. So it's really creating some trip hazards. The good thing is, this equipment is in good shape. It's a newer structure, and so there is no cost to refurbish the equipment. And then again, you see the costs from the four different manufacturers on the product. We're going to go into a little more explanation now on the different types of surfacing. So Louis, if you don't mind showing them as we talk about these. So PlayMata is the current type of tile, rubberized tile system that we have at all the sites. This is the new and improved tile, but it's still the same type of a tile interconnecting system, and it sits on the subsurface, which is that big, thick, black base. So what they would do is they would remove the old tiles and then replace them with the new tiles on the existing subsurface. Now, KYA.
Before you go on to that, do you have any clue how old these, when these current trials were put in, tiles?
Yes. They're over about 15 years old, and they have a six-year life.
Well, I was going to put that in context, because looking at that surface comparison, the warranty of six years. If you told me they were in four years ago, I'd have a bigger concern.
I was talking to the rep, the rep, and about four, five years ago, we relifted some of the existing tiles, and we laid them down. And he wishes he'd never done that, because once they've failed, they've really failed. He said at the time, we should have said, let's replace them there, and then we just didn't have the money. So, and now these things are joined, they're joined exactly the same method as the old ones with wire. What they do, they put 24 volts through the wire, and it welds the joints. So these done the job. They lasted 10 years. But they're 15 years of age now.
And the KYA surfacing is a synthetic turf product that would be placed on the existing surfacing. So they would remove the top tile layer, and they would be able to use the existing subsurfacing and put the tile, the turf on top. And then there would be, it's not like the turf on the football fields where they have the rubberized beads that are thrown in there. It will be a sand product. Okay? Then on Landscape Structures, which is the brand-new four-inch rubberized tile, and was also the most expensive, this would have to be, this is a big job. It would have to be placed on a new concrete surface. So this is a really good product. We'll talk about the warranty in the next slide, but it is also about three times the cost.
Lydia, is that what they put in at the new Miracat Alena?
No, they put in the next product.
Oh, okay.
Which is Miracle. It's a no-fault product, and it's a Pour 'n Play rubber surface. And that's placed on recompacted base.
What does Pour 'n Play mean?
It's actually mixed on the site. It's like mixing cement, and they mix it with adhesives and granules.
Kind of like they do cement?
Like a, like a asphalt kind of buildup.
Hmm.
Which is what we've done, which is what we've done at our last two.
How do you repair it?
Yeah, actually, actually saw, cut it, you cut it out, remove it.
Cut it out and then put, re-pour more Pour 'n Play stuff?
Yeah, and that's, and a lot of this product is dictated by the quality of the crew installing it, what day it is, what the temperature is, how they mix it. So that's, that was, that's my, it could be inconsistent. That's my concern.
That's a bad idea.
Yeah, and one of the drawbacks with that surface is that it's really pretty and bright when they lay it down, but the sun begins to fade the color from day one. So let's say in a year, there's a hole and you need to repair it, and even though you get the exact same color, that new, that new patch is going to be nice and bright and colorful. And again, day one, that patch is going to start being faded away. And then before you know it, when you start doing these repairs, you will have a lot of patches of different colors, although they start off as being the original color. So it creates a little bit of a.
Visual interest.
Yeah.
So it's been almost two years? And you say that's what they put at Miracat?
Yes.
So it's been almost two years?
Two years, yeah.
And, and so.
Nothing yet.
It's been, it's fading?
Yes. The color started, the sun fades the color.
But the, but the integrity is still there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you picked Miracat Alena, give us a set of, excuse me, Vista Grande, for, give us a complete set of what you're facing in a typical school. Did you also pick it because it has the worst existing surfaces?
It has, yes. It's in the top 10, probably.
We have 10 in military schools, so.
Top 10 playgrounds.
It's.
We have multiple playgrounds at our elementary schools.
I think that's one of the things that we have to look at. You have to look at going forward. We put these in all at the same time. They've all failed at the same time. Just like our roofs.
Yeah.
You've got, every year, you've got to be hitting one or two of them. And as you go along, so that, you know, you're going to get them failing, but you hit them.
Right, and that's, that goes to my question, that you're triaging it, or you're doing an assessment?
And you've got to be constantly budgeted to replace a play system flooring a year.
Is this an assessment that we should have some outside party help us with, or is this assessment that we're doing?
It's going forward. If we did, we have to start now.
It's an assessment we can do, like you need a paint job?
Yes.
It's obvious to anybody that has some expertise that which one's the worst, which one needs to be addressed first.
And continuously doing it, which we will do with the roofs.
And actually, PlayMata, which is the company that we already have, has done that for us. And so we have, we have quotes from them to do all of the elementary schools, and they've ranked them by the worst to the least. So we have that by them. So what we did next was we put a little chart together here for you. So the PlayMata is the, again, the current existing tile structure, but it would be an upgraded one. It has a six-year warranty, just like previously. There is routine maintenance required, general dirt, grime, cleaning, et cetera. And it, there's currently a piggyback bid from Charter Oak School District, and the total cost, and this is just the surfacing, in, for these comparison purposes, I didn't add the equipment costs. So this is just the surfacing. So if we use the PlayMata product, you're looking at $194,000.
Basically, X dollars per square foot times the number of square foot we have as an installed price?
Yes, plus the removal, the demo.
Right.
And then the second surface would be the synthetic turf. This does have a 10-year life. Again, they all have routine maintenance. It's just what kind of routine maintenance does this have? This has some hand grooming of the sand infill when required in areas of heavy foot traffic. This has a piggyback with Wiseburn School District. This is the newest agreement that's out there. Wiseburn is starting to do this, and they will have all their schools with the synthetic turf. Landscape Structures, which is the brand-new huge four-inch tile, it is a 10-year life on that. Again, routine cleaning of the surface is what's required. They have a CMAS agreement, and you can see for one school, that'd be $333,000. And then the Pour 'n Play surface, which only has a five-year warranty, still some routine maintenance. Basically, it comes down to keeping it clean. They have an agreement with NJPA, which is the National Joint Powers Authority. And so each of these companies do have an agreement that we can piggyback or attach ourselves to. And the total costs are there for your review. And after Louis and I talked about them, and we shared some of our concerns with Dawn, moving forward, what the district staff recommendation would be is to go with the synthetic turf product. This is a picture of a school where they've laid it. It looks nice. You can see where the landing zones are. It is a square rubber piece to make it more durable, so that is easy to replace. Louis, you want to talk about some of the repair items that you've, that made you decide that that was the best product?
If it does fail, you know, no one's going to get any type of danger. There's no wires sticking out. There's no trip. You just tape it down, and the guys come back. It's just like a carpet in your house.
Yeah.
It's a fantastic product. And I think, I was thinking about this today. Our areas are so huge where the kids play, our play areas. Kids would sit and play on this. I don't think they'd sit and play games on this. It's, it's a comfortable, clean area for the kids just to play, even if they're on the equipment, because the areas are so big. I just think it's nice. It's clean. It's inviting, and it's relatively light maintenance.
How long has the product been around?
This product, I think this product's been about, the technology of this type of surface has been around for about 10 years, but this product's been about three or four years. And it's the start to move into schools, that this is their, this is their big thing.
And so if we contact any school that has the.
We want to go visit Wiseburn.
They've just put one in Anza, and I actually, I wanted to see it. I just didn't have a chance to see it, but it's, I just think it's a nice, clean.
How about surface temperature?
It's, it's got sand on it, so it hasn't got the rubber pellets, which give the heat off. That's why you get the heat off the playing fields. So it puts like a green, a green granular sand in there, the same color. Yeah, you're going to have heat, but not, not anything like a football field.
Football fields are hot.
Or sitting on blacktop.
[laughing]
Getting heat rash.
Well, the, I mean, the one that's $330,000 probably doesn't seem very feasible, as wonderful as it looks.
So this, this would be just for, this price you're talking about, just at Vista Grande?
This is just at Vista Grande, and then the hope is that we continue to address all the, all the elementary schools.
Can you go back a slide? Linda has a question, then I have a question.
On the chart?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. The first is, yeah, I'd love to see a school that's had that the longest. So just like, you know, my dad always told me, don't buy a car in the first model year that it's out. So I don't know if, if Wiseburn hasn't had it the longest, maybe we could find out.
The picture that I'm showing you is from Durfee Elementary School in Almani. And so we can call them and find out. I have, I know the CBO there, and I can talk to him and see how long they've had it down.
And just to see what the, maybe what principals think of it. Maybe the maintenance guys are going to have to be dealing with this. Maybe they have some thoughts, just to sort of get a lot of, as much input as possible. I don't know if you can ask kids. I don't know. But just to get as much input as possible from different, different people. Otherwise, I kind of, anything with the longest warranty is a good thing.
Yeah, I'll be, I have the same questions slash concerns or interests. I'd be curious. My first inclination is that that won't hold up as much, but if it's a 10-year warranty, then I'm assuming they're going to replace it. So I actually would be interested in seeing, I thought you were going to say you were going to recommend the Mata, because it's what we had. And then I was thinking about the six years, making it 12 years is really around 380, 390, and then kind of comparing, but that's a non-issue based on your recommendations. So now, if we're looking at these two, clearly there's a sizable financial difference. I, I'm very curious, based on kind of the type of natural environments we have at our different school sites and elementary schools, and the trees, and the dirt, and the, I'd be, I'd be curious to at least see the very expensive one and how it holds up or not. Those are just some of my concerns when I see the synthetic turf.
I mean, we could, we could move forward, because it's something that's not going away. Every site's failing. I mean, we're going to get to the point, we may have to close areas if we can. There's only so much that they can do. Maybe look at a few of them, diversify them, and see how they perform, because we need to replace them, period. And then, as they fail, different warranties, and then you're maintaining them and changing them when needed. Maybe versus doing just one product. But I just, as I said personally, I just, I like this. I know where you're coming from regarding them questions, and we can find that out. But I just like it, because it's so clean, easy, and it just makes sense. But your points are valid.
I'd also be curious to hear from the principals, and especially the principals that have been around the district for a long time, and have probably lived through a few different surfaces, and hear what they have to say as well.
Okay.
So what kind of.
What do you need?
You're looking for some.
Answers to the question.
Guidance or some?
Well, we'd like to come back with a recommendation with.
Would address, hopefully would address, encompass the questions that were.
Yeah. And, and like I said, this is our recommendation, just from the homework that Louis and I have done, and the communication that we've had with the different vendors. And, but we'd be happy to bring it back. Whether you're interested in this recommendation with more additional information that you've just expressed, we can do that. Or if you want us to bring you back maybe two options and select.
The vendors would, they'd, obviously, they could come.
Yeah, vendors would be happy to come as well.
Could come and do a presentation if it's more information.
Well, I'd say for me, unless, maybe, I assume my colleagues agree, but maybe not, the $333,000 one doesn't seem feasible. And even if we are the pilot test model store, and we got it for 50% off to show it to everybody else, it doesn't, it doesn't seem feasible. We know what the PlayMata surface is, because we have lots of them. It's held up well, but it has a few things you pointed out, that when it starts to fail, it's not good. So it's really between KYA surfacing and Miracle, as far as whether we want to ask you to do the research on just KYA surfacing, or also Miracle. I mean, that would be the, my way of viewing it. Does anybody have any interest in having additional information back about the Miracle Pour 'n Play? It has the shortest warranty.
It just, the warranty is the thing that bugs me, Larry.
I don't, I frankly don't like the idea of a site prepared onsite and set onsite. I just, that's fraught with issues to me. So, okay, you basically.
I would be curious to hear if, it may not make sense that the same surface is used at every single playground, that there may actually be issues that you know that lend themselves to one or the other, the Mata or the, it seems to me that's the case as you walk around our campuses, that there are trees and roots and leveling and all sorts of other crazy stuff that goes on.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't here. I'm not really sure of the amount of preparation that went into the substrate, meaning your base, base material. You know, guys, some guys are saying when you put concrete down first, and you put your base up. Some guys say, you know, 90% compacted base. I don't know. I wasn't there. But what I do like about this, again, if it does start to fail, the tile's not going to pop up. Your grass is going to cover, like your natural grass does in your garden. So we can work with it versus kids getting injured.
Who would you envision, is it something left to the custodian to learn how to?
No, the only thing a custodian would do would groom, groom, groom the areas that are the high-impact areas with a groom, because there's sand in it, and just bring it back up to let it pop. That's the only.
There's not some other person trade that we would have to have?
And it's, it's warranted. If it gets ripped, they'll come and worry. You know, they'll cut a section out. And if it does get damaged or vandalized, it's just like a carpet in your house. They can cut it out, seam it, and match it.
Linda and I visited a site on Monday together and got firsthand experience, not, not just with, with what we, we were at Dapple Gray. Not only with the, where the surfacing was, but I mean, we're talking about blacktop also. And also, there were areas around the school. Remember when we were. Remember when we were looking at these browned areas and when you showed the picture of that stuff actually on a site, I was thinking, God, that'd be great for some of these areas that we've turned brown that just look, you know, horrible. Many of our play areas, even this one Louis, the picture that's up here. Is it, is it a DSA? Well, I know that's not us, but I mean, you see the picture, right?
It's the Durfee one.
You see the picture? Is it a DSA requirement that the, that the surface have to extend that far away from the play area?
No, it's not a DSA requirement, it's the certain distances where you have to have landing areas for kids to land, like a swing.
I mean, I'm looking at this thing unless that kid's gonna land.
Big jump, Malcolm.
That's a big jump.
It's not a DSA requirement, it's the playground safety standards on distances in front of equipment.
Now, the thing is about the school that we don't know because this isn't our school is, they may have had an existing area and they chose to keep the large area, just like, for example, if you look at, look at this.
And I know why it's like that because at Vista Grande before that, it was sand.
It was sand, it was when my kids played soccer there.
And if you, you can, you can begin to quickly imagine how much money we would save in surfacing if we say remove the swings where we have lots of accidents and monkey bars.
And which is what LA Unified's done.
Run that by?
LA Unified is, I believe, has removed all swings.
But what we've done is we've, we took the existing sandboxes as large as they were and kept them.
Can I just interject? We are not recommending removing swings. If that gets out, it was Louis's idea, we have nothing to do with that. We're not taking out a swing.
We weren't asking that, but what we were asking is you might, you might be able to cost manage some of these projects, you might be able to take away some of the area. Do me a favor, when you're doing the additional research on the green one. Find out what the bid would be if we had to replace the subsurface. Because what's not apples to apples in this comparison at all is the most expensive one is replacing the subsurface and putting the new surface in, that's just the way that system works. If it turns out that when we go to replace some of this, pull up some of the tiles that we want to replace and they pull out the subsurface is the issue.
The two companies that do use the existing subsurface, they've sensed, they've went out there and pulled tiles. So they've done their due diligence and they're comfortable. And at the end of it, whenever these systems are done, there's an ASTM standard F-1292 and it's basically a drop high-performance requirement. So what they do is they get a calibrated mechanism and they drop a ball down of four foot, six foot, eight foot and it has to meet a certain impact requirement. And that's means that your system's good for falls. So they have to meet that requirement, period. It's on these guys and it's in the contract. We did obviously look at the-
So they take the risk if they've done their due diligence and it turns out that subsurface has some repair work, that's on them?
Yes, yes. They, they, they looked at that. It's the first thing they all wanted to know what the substrate was.
All right, cool.
Are the existing, the playground equipment, I can't remember where we're at with playground equipment. And if for any reason, is it kind of the old-school playground equipment actually is going into the subsurface versus if we were to buy new playground equipment, it's not nearly as deep and/or, meaning, are there playgrounds where we actually are gonna be having to dig up everything anyways?
Yeah, Louis, talk about the life of the poles and stuff.
The main yellow poles, I think the four or five, four-inch poles, there's a hundred-year warranty on them. They're the things that everything's bolted off. The things that are failing are all, everything that's bolted to it, which is the decks, the handrails, blah, blah, blah. What we got a cost from, for the rehab of the existing equipment was for, to rehab what was failing or what you could see. And for anything that would fail that goes into the ground, the slides. Because we don't want to be spending all this money putting a surface down and ripping it up two years, a year from now, changing a slide. So we priced that, so once, once it goes down, we put a surface, it gets rehabbed, we're walking away for fifteen years, hopefully.
But every year after those, we will be replacing based on this new system that you're talking about?
Yes, I'm, yes, of course. It's just what we're, what they're recommending is we rehab the existing play equipment. Be silly not to do that, spending all this money on a surface.
Or not to do all at once.
Yes.
And what we could do-
I was just gonna ask where the, if we have, is this deferred maintenance, is this something we're gonna have to?
We could do a little deferred maintenance. We have, let me kind of combine my thought and answer your question at the same time. What we could do is we ask them to only come out right now and, and quote us on Vista Grande. Because for my presentation, I just wanted to focus on the one school. We could ask them to come out and quote every single one of the playground structures with the failing surfaces and prioritize them for us, similar to what Gary did on the roofing. And then we could, based on dollars available, put a plan together and say, okay, this year we're gonna do Vista Grande and Point Vic. Over the summer, we'll add another one. We can actually put a, a plan in place. And the funds that we actually have available, but we do still have roofing on deferred maintenance. And I'm gonna tell you what the balances are this year, but knowing that sixteen, seventeen, there will be more dollars going into them. So deferred maintenance right now has a balance of one point two million. The Fund Forty Special Reserve has a balance of one point six million. And the least flexible of the funds, Fund Twenty-Five School Developer Fees, has a balance of two point one million. Unfortunately, that is gonna keep growing because that is to be used for growth-related projects. And unfortunately, we're not in that position. We are tapping into a little bit where we can for replacement furniture and things like that. So if you don't consider that fund, we have about, just about three million dollars between those two funds. And then you have your one-time money that you may want to designate some of those dollars for facilities-related projects.
And I'm assuming the company's gonna give us a way better price if they know they're getting a lot more business?
No, not necessarily because they've already, by having a piggyback or CMAS agreement, they've already-
Oh, they've already got their, their best price? Oh, darn it, okay.
Unfortunately, again, looking at it out of context with all the other things that we need to do, it's hard to say we should spend this much or that much on this plan or that plan without putting aside, what roof are we gonna do that year, what asphalt are we gonna do this year, what other twenty-seven other needs we have are gonna do this year. Which again highlights, if nothing else, if we're not gonna do some kind of facilities upgrade, at least we gotta do some kind of valuation, come up with a maintenance plan over the next short-term, intermediate term, and have money set aside for it with an understanding where we're gonna go and so on. Otherwise, we're just band-aiding things and we're going to fix the most needy thing and at one point look and go, wow, we have no money, what are we spending on? And we didn't, I just, I hated to go through maintenance by Band-Aids because that's what we've been doing for fifteen years.
So are you saying, so before we would do the big plan, we could do sort of a smaller?
I, I, we need to come up, we have to make a fundamental decision. Either we're gonna do a facilities master plan that's gonna, assume we're gonna go raise money or we're gonna do a maintenance master plan that was much less involved in what we do and then, and put in, here's our funding sources, here's our needs. Puts in, you know, we know we've already done the roofing plan and we have a good idea of what that costs and we have gone down the road of looking at allocating some of, but we haven't sat and said in context, would that lay, overlay that with the asphalt needs, with electrical- Yeah, it's, it's an astronomical number, much bigger than we can afford. But we need to make logical decisions based on, I mean, you know, you go back to the air conditioning or whatever. We ought to have air conditioning, we ought to be able to pay the salaries you want to be able to pay. There's a lot of things we want to be able to do, but we don't have the resources to do all of them. Anyway, constrained choices. You, do you have enough guidance?
Right now, I'm going to go back with the turf, dig a little more and come back with a proposal for the board to approve to move forward with.
And really be great if we had some actual, something about seeing a surface that's been around for a couple of years so that-
Are you interested in having the vendor come?
No.
I'm more interested in knowing how the surfaces are holding up in an existing site that's had some wear and tear than seeing a presentation. Louis's done a great job of showing us our-
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Louis. And Lydia, I hope you feel better. Okay, we're on to consent calendar, we'll go to, oh, I apologize Sandy. Come, please come.
It was really, really, really hard for me to watch that and not just want to burst into tears or burst into rage, one of the two. When I say that Vista Grande has three playgrounds and for fifty years, Mare Catalina had one. One. And the only reason we have a second one now is because the parents had to pay for it themselves. So it's really hard for me to work up an issue here about, oh, they have to get their grounding replaced and, oh, their playground needs to be refurbished and, oh, it's starting to fall apart, so we gotta put some money into it. When, where was the money for Mare Catalina? Where has it been? You've got all this money and so we're supposed to now repair three playgrounds for Vista Grande when you couldn't ever put any money into Mare Catalina, ever. They have nine swings, we have three. And I don't know if you know what it's like there, but the kids have to take turns and the way they do it is they sit there and wait and they count. You get twenty pumps and then it's my turn. Have you, do you remember swinging as a kid? Twenty pumps, you could barely work up any energy at all. Well, it's time to get off, next person has to get on or else their recess is over. That's what it's like for the kids at Mare Catalina compared to nine swings at Vista Grande. And yet you want to go fix up their playground and make it all so nice and so much better.
No, we want to fix it so it's not dangerous.
And what about the kids at Mare Catalina? What about them?
It applies to every child in every school.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't because you won't have much to fix for them. What you'll have to fix for them is one little tiny square that's fifteen years old and has three swings.
Sandy, I'm not gonna argue with you, thank you.
No, you're not gonna argue with me because you really just don't care. It's an equity issue, it's an equality issue and for years you haven't put any money on that side of the hill. You'll have no problem-
Sandy, Sandy, you're done. Sandy, I'm not gonna sit and take from you that I don't care about this district and the schoolchildren in it. You have no right to say that to me. You have no right to say that to me. Sandy. Sandy.
I, I can bring something to this conversation because when we dedicated, and by the way, I spent the better part of the nineties at Mare Catalina, both my boys went through it, so I was on-site counsel, so I have a kind of warm place for that part of the world that I lived in for fourteen years. But that said, two years, when we had the PTA come and it wasn't all on their nickel, we were gonna be expected to bring something to the game. I don't know whether you remember or not, Lydia, I had asked for a report that you did for me when you got to the board of how, how were, at the ten elementary schools, the playground equipment paid for? And by and large, almost exclusively, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want misinformation, that it was site-based, site-raised, it was a PTA priority that maybe one school over the other. If, if you may remember that report, I, I'm not sure I can put my fingers right on it, but it may be something for enlightenment for, for the rest of it.
We finished public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, we'll move on to consent. Malcolm, is there anything you'd like to pull?
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'd like to pull N-1A.
Tony?
No.
Lynda?
They go together, I was gonna do Malcolm's, we'll just talk on the same thing. And then N-2D and N-2F, I just had a question.
Okay, so someone make a motion to approve N-1B and C, N-2A through D, excuse me, through C, N-2E, N-2G through H, N-3A, N-4A through E.
So moved? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Malcolm or Lynda, N-1A.
Well, the thing, thing I was gonna point about N-1A is in the personnel, assignment orders and changes. And I know Louis doesn't, didn't want to make a big deal or anything, but if everybody noticed, we're losing Louis. And we just lost him. But, is he coming back? No? But I wish him well, I know his next venture is kind of exciting, maybe we'll even cross paths again with, with what he's going to be going. But I really have enjoyed the past three years, two years?
Three years.
Three years. Yeah, after Matt left, it was like, how can we replace Matt? And lo and behold, we got Louis, so I wish him well. And finding a Louis replacement, I guess is something we're gonna be looking at? Okay. And with that-
Lynda ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a fun process. My question is on the personnel thing, John, if you can just, I'm just curious about this. They're under, I always like to look at what's different between the two high schools and not that it's good and bad, but just sort of to understand if things are different just because it's always been different or if there's a reason. But there, there are a bunch of college board exams assistants at Peninsula High School. A bunch of people are paid about three thousand dollars to, I guess, I'm guessing they're proctoring exams. It looks like a lot of parents and former parents. And I'm just wondering why Peninsula has that and PV High does not. I don't remember seeing it for PV High ever in this, if they fund those things a different way, does anybody know? Anyone, anyone?
I can research that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious because it's, it's a pretty big chunk of money altogether.
To put it in perspective though, we never used to list that at all. It's been a practice at Peninsula High for years and years and only recently is it now showing up on personnel reports.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just curious.
It may, it may well be that the practice is different between the high schools, but-
We've talked a lot about transparency and parents always want to know where their money's going and I'm just guessing that PV pays for it in a different way, so.
I don't think any of it's-
Or maybe they do, I don't, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Okay, with, John will get back to you on that, so with, with that, will someone-
I move approval.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, N-2D, Lynda?
And this is on the same theme, I'm just wondering if anyone knows on these avid visits, why the PV High avid kids go to Texas and the Penn High avid kids go to Central Coast? If it's a rotation, some kind of three or four-year rotation? Or if the teachers just go where they want to go or how that works, do you know?
Again, I can address that, I spoke with Jen Egan, who is over at PVHS and she was talking about why, because I asked the same question when these came in, it's like, why Texas? And so basically what Jen does is they look at it out-of-state and then they look at it in-state, they go to local, so it's a flip-flop for them. They, when talking with Jen, she was looking at Texas, first of all, because they have many students, she says migrate to Texas. And so they really wanted to get a firsthand view of Texas. And also the other criteria is making sure that when they go to a place, they can visit multiple schools. And so if you can see the different schools and the current considerations. So that was her reason why she was going to Texas.
Okay, so they rotate different years to different places, so everyone eventually gets sort of a similar experience? Okay, thanks. I'll move, what do I say for that again?
Move approval.
Thanks.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
N-2F, Lynda?
Same thing, it was the same.
Okay, same thing, so make approval.
Approval of N-2F.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item O-1, I believe? Or do we got anything? We did, we did, the N-4s were all consent.
Yeah, O-1.
O-1, we have one speaker, Sandy. Yes?
I looked at the results when they first came out, it seems like it's old news now. And I was happy that, to see that our students did relatively well, but we still, you know, compared to the state average, they did well, but still not really what you'd want to see well if you think that thirty percent of our students at the high school level are below what's considered proficient. That's still not stellar. And it doesn't seem accurate when you think about how good our school is and about how exceptional our students are, it doesn't seem like it's a true measure. It doesn't seem like it matches reality. I don't think thirty percent of our students in high school are in a failing classification. And so that brings that whole number up to, doesn't seem right. So those results don't seem correct. But anyway, the-
But anyway, the real question I had about the numbers, as I looked at them, is we know we were here in the spring, and people were real concerned about opt-outs, and there were a lot of opt-outs, particularly at PV High, there were a tremendous amount of opt-outs, although Penn also had a lot of them, and at least one of the intermediate schools had a very relatively high amount of opt-outs. And yet, when I looked at it, there was like 90% participation across the board, and I thought, well, that seems really weird. So I'm wondering where that 90% participation rate came from. I'd like to know where the number, number came from. Who, where did they get the 90% participation rate? And then I looked at the number of juniors that are enrolled, and it looked way low. So it can't be a number that came out of CalPads, because it didn't look like it was correct at all. So I'm wondering where these numbers came from. Where did they get the numbers of students enrolled, and therefore come up with this magical 90% number of students who participated? Because I mean, this is like, you know, what rendered of something I heard a long time ago, which is there are lies, there are damn lies, and then there are statistics. Because it seems like no matter how many children opt out, we still have 90% participating, woo-hoo! I don't know how we did that, it must be common core math, because that seems just magnificent. And then therefore, we never will have any problem, and we don't have to worry how many children opt out, because we'll always have 90% participation, no matter what. That, that's lovely. I'd like to know where the numbers came from. That's all.
Thank you.
Do I get an answer?
You'll get a presentation, and hopefully a presentation answers it.
Yes, thank you.
If it doesn't, you'll get an answer at some point.
Thank you, and we will, we'll provide an answer at the end of our presentation, so I'd like to invite Dr. Fricker up to join me, and as Dr. Fricker's coming up, I'd like to thank Joan Romano for staying. Joan is our local educational agency, she's our LEA representative, so.
With turf.
With turf. Can we, we provided the turf for you, just in case if you're tired and you'd like to just lay down for a little bit. Okay, we'll get the screen up for you, get it set up for you.
Thank you, Dr. Culverhouse. It is my pleasure this evening to report on our CASP and SBAQ scores for the Palisverdes Peninsula Unified School District. Just an overview of the assessment, the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress is the overarching organization, and the following is the test battery that we had attributed last year. The Smarter Balance Assessment was given, the California Alternative Assessment, that is the SBAQ for our special education students who qualify, that was a field test, that was given last spring. And to meet all federal and state requirements, we also were giving the California Standards Test in Science, the California Alternative Performance Assessment in Science, and the California Modified Assessment in Science. Just to give you an overview of the timeline of the test and the preparation that went into the assessment, assessment preparation really began in 2012, 2013, with the needs assessment across the district, as we're moving to a computerized test and the infrastructure that would need to be put in place in order to conduct the computerized tests. And then the alignment to the new, more rigorous California standards began with professional development and workshops for our site leaders and for our instructional staff across the district. In 2013, 14, the field test was administered. No official scores were reported from the field test, but the field test did give us solid information as to the indication of that curricular alignment, and if it was in alignment with the test battery of questions, and if the integration of computer technology was effective throughout the district. For the consortium, it was critical, as they were implementing roughly 20,000 test questions across the nation, in order to select the test questions that would be in the official battery, to ensure the validity and reliability of the test. And in 2014, 15, that was the official CASP administration, and the official scores will be in the report to follow. SBAQ organization, they cover two main content areas for this test battery, and that was in English Language Arts and in Mathematics. And breaking down the SBAQ components, there were three major components to the test, the first of which is the Computer Adaptive Test, or the CAT portion of the test. This is a scored portion of the test, and the educational testing system capitalized on other well-known test batteries, who also use adaptive testing, like the GRE, or the Graduate Records Examination, and the GMAT, the Graduate Management Admissions Test, which are also adaptive tests. In those tests, it incorporates industry-standard algorithms to efficiently address student skills by maintaining the validity and the reliability of the assessment. The Computer Adaptive Test items are multiple choice and constructive responses. They are geared to measure the student's knowledge throughout the test. So for an example, a student who is given a test question and gets the test question correct, they will be given an additional, more rigorous test question to follow. A student who is given the same test question but got it incorrect, would then get a follow-up question to assess what skills they were deficient in. All of those test questions are geared and calibrated to the same standard, so that they're all in line with the validity and reliability and the consistency of the test, meaning that students who took the test more than once would get a consistent score on the outcome of the test. After that, there was a classroom activity. The classroom activity is a non-scored portion of the test. It is a 30-minute canned or prepared lesson that the teachers would give to all students. Students who were absent on the day of the canned lesson would be given the opportunity to make up that portion prior to the performance task, as that instructional activity would actually prepare them to do the performance task that would come later on. The performance task was the final portion of the test, it is the other scored portion of the test, and it does require the activity in conjunction with the computer research that went into the completion of the performance task. The assessments were broken out by grade level, and you can see that the SBAQ was given in ELA and Mathematics in grades three through eight, and also grade 11. In addition, as previously mentioned, the CST, CMA, and C, or the Kappa exam for Science was given in the grade levels of grade five, grade eight, and grade 10. And then the Modified Assessment, which was a field portion last year, was given in the same grade levels as the SBAQ assessment. The CASP scores were reported in two major field areas. The first is a scaled score range, and you can see the ranges for English Language Arts and Mathematics. The scaled score, to get the minimum and maximum in those ranges, is a compilation of the CAT portion and the performance task portion added together. Those were broken out into achievement-level descriptors, so the ranges were broken down by level to determine where the students fell in terms of achievement. Level four was standards being exceeded, and level one was standards not met. It was interesting to note that levels three and four would indicate the level of college and career readiness, and that those levels stated that although at different grade levels, they were not college and career-ready, but they had met the standard or requirement to be on track to be college and career-ready. And then now looking at the overarching scores, the next two slides are going to be broken out in English Language Arts and in Math. On the left-hand side, you will see that we have comparative data between other similar and surrounding districts, and on the right, you will see the achievement level indicators that we just previously discussed, from exceeding standards all the way down to not meeting the standard. These scores are overall across the district in English Language Arts and Literacy. And for the Palisverdes Peninsula Unified School District, 39% exceeded the standard, and an additional 38% met standard, indicating that 77% of our students were meeting the standards or above in English Language Arts. And that's for all grade levels. Overall, for Mathematics, again, the same indicators of comparative districts was used, and Palisverdes Peninsula Unified School District did extremely well in Math in terms of the comparative districts, meaning that 44% exceeded the standard, an additional 29% met standards, a total of 73% of our students exceeded or met standards in the area of Math. Breaking down that global data to more of a specific level, we looked at the grade level of third grade. Third grade was significant, as the third grade students had never received instruction be, other than the most rigorous California standards that had been in place, and they were the beneficiary of having three years of the implementation of instructional strategies across the district, through the professional development that went on. So with grade three, we're excited to report that 51% of our students exceeded standards in English Language Arts and Math, and then an additional 30 met the standards, indicating that 81% of our students were proficient, or met the standards or above in English Language Arts across the third grade level. The like scores in Math, the same indicators were there, and like districts, and a total of 85% of our students across the district either met or exceeded standards in the area of Mathematics. And finally, we're going to look at the CST scores, I mean, the CST Science scores that were reported this year. There's a cut, there's one different indicator between the SBAQ scores that we just saw and the Science scores, in that the indicators range a five-point scale for the CST, whereas the SBAQ, remember, was a four-point scale. And if you look on the right, the indicators from advanced all the way down to far below, basic in the purple, represent the score results. For Palisverdes Unified School District as a whole, overall in Science, we have 62% of our students who were advanced, and we had another 25% of our students who were proficient. So 87% of our Science students met the proficiency line or above for the CST in Science. Only 2% were in the far below or the purple category. The next steps is to utilize this baseline data to roll out our professional development plan, and really have a powerful instructional strategy to influence instruction as it happens in the classroom. We've been working diligently with the principals, site leadership, and the instructional staff to look at this data, internalize it, and then inform their instruction and their common practices amongst the school sites. Individual scores have come in, and they will be mailed out later on this week to families, and then I believe in your package, you also have the assessment schedule for the spring of this year, which indicates all of the assessments that we will be given. I just want to thank and make note that the, the achievement levels are outstanding for this district, and by the comparative data, and that is largely attributed to the hard-working students that we have in our classrooms, and our instructional staff, and the leadership across the district, in conjunction with our parent and community. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I want to make a note, and then I don't know if you want to address the question about the high school.
Right, I will do that.
I have a quick one.
Fire away.
It's just a kind of heads up, we've had this conversation before, and I just want to reiterate it, that I want to get the next-generation science standards on our radar, and we've focused so much on the past couple of years of ELA and Math, rightfully so because of the assessment, but we are doing very well in terms of the assessment or the CSTs in Science, but in actuality, we're kind of in this weird limbo between transferring between the California Content Standards for Science, and going to the next-generation science standards. And teachers and students, kind of in spite of us, and in us, I mean, the whole state of California is in this dilemma, are doing well, but it's not apples to apples, there are, is about a 30% shift in some of the content, and we had a chance about a year and a half ago to kind of get in front of the train and maybe be a part of that dialogue, and it didn't happen, so I want to kind of just bang the drum one more time now, maybe it's a good time to kind of just reiterate that I, I think it's really important we provide some opportunity for our teachers, especially the elementary teachers, to really get onto those next-generation science standards, so that whenever that assessment comes, we're already doing it. Go ahead.
Me? Having gone on Capitol Convoy back early on in my tenure on the board, and tried to beat our head against the wall about not testing second graders, because of listening to our teachers, how hard it was to prepare those kids to bubble in and not actually, you know, use the bubbles to make designs and things, but to answer questions. It's, for me, so great that we're no longer having to do that at the second-grade level, so that, that's one comment. Another comment had to do with what was raised, that I had the same question, that we have in our minds, more juniors enrolled than, than was reported, and I asked the staff that question, and I got a great answer. Do you want me to answer, or are you going to tell me, tell them the answer you so kindly gave to me?
I will answer the question, Mr. Sharp.
There's a different definition as to how they define enrollment.
So, so basically, we took our enrollment from April 1st, we had 1,009, 1,099 juniors. We had 314 opt-outs for both high schools and for the continuation high school, which gave us the number of our eligible students who could take the test of 785. The SBAQ data, so that's our data, and we had 11 students that were under the special ed, and then we had another 55 students that weren't, without test, test scores. The SBAQ was showing us, as our speaker referenced, of 90%, and the SBAQ was not considering our opt-out number. So the SBAQ has us down for testing 795 students. So they have us at a 90%, because they have us as only testing 795 students. So we're in the process of asking those same questions. You know, the data that we're looking at doesn't, there's some discrepancies, and so I think the state is still learning how they are calculating the numbers, but their data is relatively the same as our data, because we have 785 students eligible to take the test, and they have us down at 795 took the test, relatively same. And so those, those numbers are questionable, but that's where they get the 90%. They didn't count our opt-out numbers.
Do you have a breakdown by high school of the opt-outs?
I do not. I know that's, well, I don't off the top of my head. Right, I do have those.
It, it's clearly disproportionate, though, right? I mean, we know that one school, PV High School, had many more opt-outs.
Right, Penn had about 64 opt-out.
It was about 10% of the junior class, if I remember.
Rancho had a few, and then the rest were came from PVHS.
Over, just to interject, we did, we did exactly what we said we were going to do, we went back and talked to teachers, and, and students were more than free with their opinions. When I went and spoke with ASB classes as well, you know, one big issue was the proximity of the test to AP, and, and we're addressing that. So the, the schools are looking at those testing windows and trying to be responsive to the students who indicated that that was an issue for them. So we're on that.
So if you, if that's why we provided the testing window dates for you in your packet?
Is this somewhere that parents have access?
We are in the process of looking, of posting on our website, so we can have all this.
All right.
Because as you can see, the SBAQ, the AP window is May 2nd through the 13th, and we will begin our SBAQ test in 11th grade, May 16th.
Bravo.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention, having sat in at the, what was that meeting we were at? I was at, there was a parent, so that's why I can't remember. The meeting was, was that a general PTA meeting at PV High?
Mm-hmm.
And I think Linda was there also, and Dr. Austin. I think it's very important to share with the audience that at that meeting, they were, the, Dr. Park was very transparent about what those numbers looked like, how many had opted out, what were the reasons students had shared, some parents had mentioned, kind of reasons why they had encouraged the opting out. And the point I want to make is, one, I think it was very healthy, and we learned a lot about timing, we learned a lot about why students may have opted themselves out versus why parents may have opted students out. It was one of the highest rates in the state of California, so I think that's very important to note, that this was not a normal phenomena, that we were one of the only high schools that had the kind of numbers that we had. And then to hear the reasons, and I'm bringing that up, because I think our overall scores were in like the top five or six of LA County.
They were very high, and, and the source that we had originally pulled that out of, I'm going to question, so I don't want to put a number to it, but they were high.
Fine, we're in the top in LA County.
Yes, they were high.
Yet, some of our most advanced students at one of our high schools, hundreds, did not take it. So my hunch is, we actually would have done even better. So for all the conversation about how this is destroying our education system, it's flawed, and it's got some problems, and yes, I would have liked to have seen it tested for another year, but it wasn't, and it didn't happen. So where we're at now is, I think, a really good place, and a reflection of all the great work the teachers have done, and the great work the students and the community and the parents are continuing to do. So I just, I want to highlight that, and I shared this the other day at the Capitol Comes to Campus, we need to be very purposeful when we choose things like opting out, both as a young adult or a parent. But also, we need to recognize that our students did really well, and I think they would have done tremendously higher, even if the assessment at this point isn't as fine-tuned as it could be.
And I'll, I'll add, I went to the, where were we? PTA council meeting, when you made your fine presentation, by the way. And in my remarks, I said I was having déjà vu all over again, because I remembered in 1997, 98, when STAR came about, and Pete Wilson was the guy. And Pete Wilson was the governor and people just had their hair on fire because it replaced this system called CLASS, C-L-A-S, which in polite company, I can't tell you what, some people called that acronym, but it was a short-lived assessment, was like a couple years and it ju, two years, right? Yeah. And, but when STAR came along and people were just, you know, oh, what's it going to do? There were privacy issues, I think the governor gave the district five dollars per ADA to get people ramped up and this test came before the standards, which was also kind of interesting. So this, this transition to, to a new assessment, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, we can, I, I think we can do a better job in, in, you know, I, it, it's a good idea to have these, these checkups now and then for a student to, uh, to know how he or she is doing. A, a, um, thing that I know Tony has talked about that I come back to and it was actually raised at the, at the P T A meeting, were about the formative assessments and our need to develop, you know, some, some short-term, how are we doing kinds of things instead of just, just waiting for, you know, someone else's assessment to determine how, how good a job we're doing. So.
I'll just jump in, thank you both for all your work. Um, on the opting out thing, I talked to a lot of kids last year that opted out, including my own, um, and, and, and there's a real difference and again, this is, this difference between the two high schools and why? Why is AP Language taught at P V High School and it's not taught at Peninsula High School for juniors? Right? You guys are looking at me like, right? So these kids are making a decision to opt out of a test. A lot of teachers were fine with it because they knew what was at stake for these kids and they'd worked really hard in a really, really hard class. And the kids at Penn were taking English honors, I'm sure it's just as rigorous of a class, but they weren't taking the test two weeks later. They weren't missing two weeks of English class to take a test. So I think the kids weren't trying to be disrespectful, most of them, they were just trying to do what was best for them at that time. I, I'll be interested to see what, what happens this year. Um, in a way, it kind of calls their bluff a little bit. Okay, that's, you guys had a great reason, now you don't have the reason, so let's see what happens. I'm just interested in to see how that goes. I, I would hope though, also, that we don't spend too much time at the high school level addressing skill deficiencies or all that and just let the teachers do their jobs in teaching AP English, regular English, AP Math, regular Math, whatever it is, and just do their jobs and just have the kids show up and, and take it if they want and not if they don't, but to not direct instruction at the high school level to these tests because they take a lot more tests that are a lot more important to them and to, and, and should be to us as well. Um, so that's my, my two cents on that. I'd love to also see, because I'm also competitive, I would love to see how districts like Palo Alto, Irvine, the ones I always think of, I don't know what the district is, Alamo, Moraga, whatever that district is up there, um, that churns out, you know, a lot of academic superstars that our kids compete with all over the place to see how we do against them. But you said your source was funny.
I'd be interested, you know.
And I guess I could probably pull that up online and look at myself.
Not, not the district necessarily, but, uh, you know, individual schools where demographics. Cause you could say, you know, Palo Alto Unified School District, but they have some demographics and some of their schools that are entirely different.
Right, right, right. If you look at gun high school or you look at whatever the, the schools are.
Yeah, if you want to get gun or Pali High or Tamalpais.
Game on, let's see where we're at, yeah.
I can address one of those. In Orange County, our school would have ranked second, very, very close behind Irvine. Otherwise, it would have been number two in the entire county. So we're, we're very competitive with whoever you want to stack us up with.
I guess I just, I look at it as really valuable at the elementary level and middle school level, but at the high school level, I just, as a school member, I just don't care. I don't care how our kids do on this test at the high school level because it doesn't mean anything. It means a lot more of all the tests and what they do and their grades that they produce in the classroom with our awesome high school teachers, so.
Well, I, I would disagree with you slightly in that last statement and it, it does matter in the sense that a bunch of the agencies that make judgments about the quality of our high schools will look at every little piece of data, right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, to make that judgment. So we do, it may, while it may not impact that student's performance or how the teacher is going to prepare them for their senior year in high school, it may reflect on the school as far as, uh, you know, the, you know, we knew that we, Newsweek and all these others that have rankings, you know. Um, and I, two other points, but you guys have anything else?
Can I go on this one?
Please.
Real quick, I, one of the parents had brought up at the P T A meeting that, you know, why isn't it that we are, not us, why isn't it that the state or others aren't looking as carefully and closely as things like our AP rates and our, our successful passing and other indicators that I think she thought were more, um, standardized. And I think it's a good point, I thought you were going somewhere else, Linda, where I would argue that, um, the results are important, hopefully first and foremost, to tell us kind of where we're at and how we're doing as a formative, excuse me, a summative assessment. But I, I do think we need to do a, a balance of, and I heard you said, you know, game on, right? Because we are competitive and we live in a competitive community and, you know, I can't, you know, sugarcoat that. But I do think we, as a district, can control, um, and/or advocate for some of those other measures that you're mentioning and exactly what you were saying about high school, right? I think we can, we don't need to wait for U S News and World Report to come out with a ranking. There's no reason why we can't be publicizing the amazing pass rates we have and the things that are going on. We do a, we do a good job, I think, of, uh, special interest stories and things, amazing things that our students do individually, but there's no reason why we can't control, um, some of that information that way, because it's a trap a little bit to get caught up in this new assessment that really isn't fully, uh, fine-tuned nor are the standards even, you know, our, our teachers are still learning, uh, how to implement these standards the best way possible. So I don't want to get too caught up in that, but I think it is helpful to kind of see what other similar districts are doing. So anyways, I just want to advocate, uh, what that parent had said about us doing a better job of really figuring out what are some other markers and indicators that we can let people know how great they're doing besides waiting for the, the state or SBAQ to tell us.
So, did you, go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
There you go. Um, the other thing that some people still haven't gotten the memo about is they're expecting an A P I-like number to start, uh, appear. And this concept that I keep on reading about, that I, I don't think it's been settled on about the dashboard. Um, ha, have the components of the quality of education dashboard been, been, um, settled on? I know there's like graduation rate and things like that, but.
Malcolm, yeah, and, great question. Short answer is no. Uh, the better answer is that we have direct access to, uh, the director of AXA who has obviously all of the information, is up to date as anybody else. It is likely that it will include some of those things that we do the best. Um, AP rates, ACT, SAT scores, participation in, in UC-approved courses. So those are all the things that are floating there. Those are pretty secondary heavy, um, but they're indicators that people think they understand. Then graduation rate, we do very well there. Um, so everything that's being thrown around right now are things that we're just, again, going to excel in.
So I just want to close with a couple of real quick comments. We fixate a lot of times on scores and you need to put a score sometimes in context, you know, and I'll give you an example. Um, twenty-five years ago, if you had a cholesterol score of two-twenty, you were considered to be fine. Then it became two-twenty was borderline, then two-twenty became you need medication, then two-twenty became you need a higher dose medication. And you didn't fundamentally change anything. You still had the same thing you had before, but the guidance changed. So we, we spent a lot of times worrying about an absolute number and we really need to do the comparative, comparative analysis we're doing to give meaning to it. And the second thing is that a lot of times label, labels change. So we, we have a, an old test that had us at ninety percent proficient or some nice-sounding label and we now have a test that says we're only seventy-five percent proficient, okay? The standard changed and standards changed for lots of reasons. In food safety, standards changed because we discovered something that makes you sick if you don't change. So today, I could be making something that is, meets every USDA government standard and I would, can be considered, I'd get a score of a hundred for passing, but tomorrow the USDA discovers that salmonella in some small amount can kill you and you, you, what we used to think a hundred was okay, you only have ten of or something now. So the standard has changed. Have I changed my practice? Have I gotten any, am I a worse manufacturer than I was before? No. But now I have a, now I have a descriptive score that went from passing to, you know, you're below standard. And I didn't change anything, the standard changed and the way I'm assessed changed. And so we, I, I just caution, I mean, we, there's lots of things that sound like the test could be better about, you know, as far as being a nature, but focusing too much on an absolute number or an absolute score or an absolute descriptor, I think is, um, counterproductive. And so I was just, we, parents are going to get the stuff out and Johnny, um, last year and, or two years in the old test was judged to be proficient, now the new test there needs a little bit of more help and, well, the school has failed him. Johnny probably just is going to get a better assessment of what he needs to get in order to be successful and that's all. So with that, thank you very much for your report. Thank you very, Kim, for your report and we're at the end of agenda. The meeting is adjourned.